All right, welcome back everyone. Good job Marlos, council and staff on the last item. And well, our next item on agenda is our first public hearing item, item B1. This is adoption of resolution number 0318, approving conditional use permit number UPO 448 for the Grays Inn at 561 Embarcadero. I'm going to let you get into the details of the project for us. Cindy, Cindy taking the lead on this? Okay, all right. Great to see you Cindy. We don't see you very often at our council meetings, so welcome.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. This is item 561 in Embarcadero. It is a request for a conditional use permit. And before I get into too many details, I just want to point out very quickly that I made an error when I wrote the staff report and the staff recommendation at the top of page one references recommending approval of the conditional use permit and quote, "and approval of parking exception ADO 109." That is a boilerplate error from the last time that this staff report went to the city council, so I apologize that. It got buried at the end of the sentence, but unfortunately that I think got picked up in the agenda. So the agenda says parking exception. I will point out the resolution is correct and it is for the correct approval and the body of the staff report is correct, so that is the only two places where you see the word parking exception.
And I just want to confirm with Joe, you know, do you see any issues with this so far?
No.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then also, staff did receive correspondence from a member of the public. It is the owner of Thai Bounty across the street at 520 this afternoon, so it did not make it in the packet or published to the website, but I did make extra copies. They are available at the back of the room for members of the public who would like to read the public correspondence. And copies were provided to members of the council and city clerk as well. And so with that, I will proceed with the presentation. This is a request for conditional use permit on a property that is also a city lease site on the Embarcadero at the corner of, closest to the corner of Driftwood and Embarcadero. This is an item that was previously reviewed by the city council on February 14th of last year. At that time, the direction of the city council was to continue the item to a date uncertain to revise the project. And I'll go through what that direction of the council was and then explain what changes have happened since last February. The image on the screen before you shows a vicinity map. The project essentially consists of primarily public access improvements, an extension of the Harbor Walk on the west side, one new piling and repair of existing pilings, miscellaneous building facade improvements, and then parking and sidewalk improvements necessary to meet ADA requirements. And so as I said, this was held at a duly notice public hearing last February. At that time, the project had requested a conditional use permit and a parking exception. The council's direction was to revise the plans to address signage and parking issues with the project. And just to give you a little bit more detail before I go further and explain the changes to parking and the signage, the project description is mostly the same. It is for new Harbor Walk lateral access where only partial access currently exists. This will provide an important connection from the rear of the Grays Inn, Inn, excuse me, to the north connecting with the Salt Building. It also provides for one new piling and sleeving of existing pilings. It provides some important widened vertical access and vertical access is that access that connects to the waterfront. And sidewalk and parking improvements, and then as I said, some miscellaneous building facade improvements. That includes decking and roofing repairs. It has been a while since the city council reviewed this project, so I prepared this slide here just to touch base on how the project would be proposed as a waterfront project. It is proposed in three phases. The public improvements would be constructed first. That would be the piling repairs, the new extension of the Harbor Walk, which would be 10-foot wide Harbor Walk access, ADA improvements. And then in phase two, the work proposed during that phase would be the ADA improvements on the street side. That would be construction of a new eight-foot sidewalk where currently there's five feet, reconfiguring the existing onsite parking lot to provide for ADA compliance, and then relocate the existing business signs. Phase three is the facade improvements and repairing the existing decks. Here's an existing street view image of the existing Grays Inn. So street view images you'll see, and then also here's an image of the, where that existing Harbor Walk dead ends at the gangway. Here you're looking at a gap in that Harbor Walk and this is where that connection point would be. So the next few slides I have show the revised site plan that the applicant has submitted. And in the previous review by city council, the direction by the city council was to remove the existing pole sign. At that point, the parking exception request was because the pole sign encroached into the area of one of the existing parking spots. And during the planning commission review of this, the planning commission, as required by code, reviewed this project at two previously noticed public hearings. Planning commission had recommended a condition to the city council that the applicant seek a parking exception to allow three equally divisible parking spaces. And that's why it came forward before the city council. The direction of the council was to, instead of requesting a parking exception, is to leave the parking onsite and convert the pole sign possibly to a projecting sign and if necessary, project it to the building somehow. And they have done that. The revised plans before you show that the pole sign, pole has been removed. And you'll see it on the site plan pages coming up. Oh, actually, no, it is on this page right here. So it is right here where the pole sign is. It is now to be a projecting sign. They also had an existing, previously approved monument sign that was encroaching into the right of way. That will be relocated eastward, so it is outside of that new ADA compliant sidewalk. And then as a result of changes to the parking, the applicant has also made revisions to the parking lot to reflect compliance with van accessible loading spaces. And so the plans do show now one ADA accessible spot. As a result of that requirement, the applicant did lose two parking spots, two of the previous three. And I'll have some slides that explain their request for dedicated parking across the And I would just like to point out here, we have the vertical access improvements along the south side of the building. Those remain unchanged from the council's last review of this project. And the way that I did these slides is so here's the street side and then going west, this is the middle of the property. You see the vertical access here that would lead a member of the public to the rear side of the property, the extension of the Harbor Walk here. And then further south, you see the Harbor Walk and then the location of the pilings. The one new piling that would be installed is necessary in order to support the extension of the new Harbor Walk. As far as eelgrass is concerned, the applicant did submit eelgrass studies with this project and was found to be very minimal. In one area, there was a quarter of a meter, 0.25 square meter radius and, which comes to about, it's in the planning commission staff report, but I believe it was about 45 stems. And then in the southern location, it was even smaller. It was 0.01 square meters, which I think was about four stems of grass. Here are some existing view simulations, so you can see how the project has changed since the council last saw it. Existing view, there is the pole sign in question and you see the three parking spots. And now revised, the pole sign is removed and now it is projecting in this location fairly close to where it was located before. Here's the van accessible spot, the widened vertical access corridor. There are currently some obstructions in this area and part of the applicant's project is to remove those obstructions also pursuant to the waterfront master plan. They're not allowed to have anything higher than 31 inches. So here is a slide that just summarizes basically what I've just said. They have revised their signage. They also have plans submitted that show their proposed public access signs as well as a new sign proposed for dedicated parking spaces. They are requesting from the city council approval for two dedicated parking spots to be located at the street end of Driftwood and Embarcadero across the street. They are shown on the plans, which is exhibit D of your staff report. Here's some extra slides that just basically show you existing and proposed with the signs. And then these are the sign face graphics for the proposed pole sign and then the monument sign. This one is showing that it's now outside of the right of way. Here is an image of the public access sign. So these signs are unchanged. This sign is new since the council saw it last. Part of the request would be consistent with the Roses Landing project at 725 Embarcadero that was approved last year. The applicant is seeking to replace the lost parking spots for its hotel guests. And so they're requesting not only dedication of these two parking spots across the street, but that they be dedicated from 3:00 PM to 11:00 AM daily. The use, of the hotel use on the site does present an issue for hoteliers because being that their guests are overnight guests. Staff finds it reasonable to request overnight parking spots. And so here's a slide that basically identifies what I've discussed, their previous project and the parking exception request. That was previously planning commission condition 19. And so with this revised project, that condition has been deleted from the city council resolution and it now has been changed to city council condition 20, which reflects the language for the parking agreement. And here is the location that's shown on the applicant's plans. So at the bottom here, you see site plan, or excuse me, plan view image of the Grays Inn with the parking across the street. And then just because this is a little bit easier to read, the circle on the left, it shows you where Grays Inn. This is an aerial image. It is across the street from Thai Bounty. And this is the image where the applicant is proposing. I will point out that the correspondence letter received from Mr. Melanis, the owner of Thai Bounty, I talked to him late this afternoon and he did express some concern about parking being dedicated to a hotel use and that that was precedent setting. I explained to him the Roses Landing project and he rested his concern with the request that is in the email that he sent, which basically says that he would recommend that parking spots be dedicated on that side of the street. Okay. And then after the staff report was published, we did get a letter from the applicant's agent, and this was included by the city clerk in agenda correspondence. It is a request from Kathy Novak Consulting, which requests a modification to planning condition nine. Planning condition nine is the condition regarding eelgrass protection. Currently, the project is required to provide both pre and post-construction surveys and under the California eelgrass mitigation policy, which the city implements through its conditioning on the project, it would require post-construction surveys. And the post-construction survey identifies the level of impact. If there's impact, the applicant is required to mitigate and do annual surveys typically for three years after. What the applicant is requesting is based on the minimal amount of eelgrass present at the site. And as I said earlier, this is a project where we have stems of grass, not, you know, meters upon meters of eelgrass, is that they're requesting that if there is no impact, that annual surveys not be required to be performed. Staff has no objection to this, so staff is recommending that this condition be modified. My apologies, it's actually condition eight, not nine. And then again, I've already mentioned this, but planning commission recommended condition 19 regarding the parking exception has been deleted, of course, due to the loss of the two onsite parking spaces. It is condition 20 in your council resolution that references the dedicated parking request. As a recap, under the code, conditional use permits on the waterfront are required to be reviewed by planning commission prior to city council review. This project was reviewed as a combined concept precise plan approval, so this would be the last step in the discretionary hearing process. And on the screen, I've just prepared what the planning commission's recommended conditions to the city council were. And again, one more time, 19 is obsolete now. The next step, should the council approve the project tonight, would be for them to apply for their coastal development permit followed by building permit approval. Staff recommends conditional approval of the project known as UPO 448 as identified in council resolution 0318. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Great Cindy, thanks. And we'll open up questions for council. I don't see any speaker slips at this time. Okay, we do have one. Okay, good. So we'll go through council questions, open up for public comment, and then we'll have the applicant's agent come up and speak. We're not, just a minute, Barry. But we'll go for council questions first and then the applicant's agent can come up and have their presentation. And then any questions, further questions for the applicant through the agent, I guess we can address at that time. Pardon me. So with that, Red, would you mind starting out with questions, please?
Sure. My question is about the parking and it's about the email from Mr. Melanis recommending that instead of dedicating the parking on the east side of the Embarcadero, that the two parking spots be dedicated on the other side. Does our community development have any thoughts on that?
It's probably better located where it's proposed on that side, although maybe not right adjacent into the restaurant. It might be better to put it back in the corner. So I mean, do you have this slide?
I would like to add that one of the comments that I gave to Mr. Melanis was, as part of the process and the conversations that we've been having is with the general plan and LCP update, and a lot of this background documentation is trying to avoid situations where we're adding more parking to the west side of the Embarcadero and that it may be more beneficial for, you know, getting rid of obstructions off the waterfront, even if it is just a car. So I did throw that out to him as a suggestion, but I'll go to the slide.
So you see on the board where it's at, my house, where they're proposing them to be located, it's, you know, butts their restaurant. So it'd be nice, maybe you could put it on the other side, maybe back in the corner or something, so it's not in one of the more prominent spots.
Yeah.
Or along there, on the opposite side, maybe that might be a better solution.
I'm sorry, say that again. The better solution is where?
Harbor corner.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, okay. That's my only question.
Okay. Thanks Matt.
I do have a question. It was brought up about the eelgrass or the lack thereof. Maybe later when we have the applicants come up, then we can talk about the material of the walkway, the Harbor Walk, and letting light come through, and then we can talk about that. Because if we were going to, you know, if we voted, if the council voted to forego the eelgrass consideration, perhaps we could talk about what the material is, or maybe you could right now, for the dock and the Harbor Walk.
Sure. It would be translucent grading. It would have to be open to light. We wouldn't be foregoing eelgrass requirements. They would still be required to comply with the California eelgrass mitigation policy. That's the document that NOAA uses as its implementing guidelines for protection of eelgrass. So they would be required to do an eelgrass survey no sooner than 30 days prior to start of construction. That identifies to us what eelgrass is there. So when they did their eelgrass survey as part of their planning review, that was done in 2016, that pre-construction eelgrass survey would still be a requirement. They're not asking to change that. That'll be really important to us because then we'll be able to identify whether there have been any increases, decreases in eelgrass. And then they'll do their work. But, I mean, and the applicant can speak more to it as well. It's just, they still will be required to comply with the Kemp, is my point.
I think their main issue is, in complying with the Kemp, if they do the pre-construction survey and there's no eelgrass, the Kemp likely allows them to not have to do the follow-up surveys, because why would you need to do that if there was no eelgrass when you started? And so the Kemp does recognize that. And so I think that's really where the letter is founded, is recognizing that, the Kemp allows for that. So I think that's why the request, I guess I would say.
And then also in terms of pilings, they would like to put one new piling in and then put a protective coating around the existing pilings. Do we have any idea of the lifespan of those existing pilings?
I don't. Yeah, yeah. The applicant might know.
Well, I know my thinking is if you're going to put one in and you're going to protect these other pilings, wonder what the lifespan is on those, looking down the road, if they need to be replaced, and when they would need to be replaced. So that's all my questions.
Okay. It's a long lifespan. I don't know the answer. I think the applicant or the architect could speak to that.
Okay, Matt, John?
Thank you Cindy, nice to see you as well again. Just a couple of questions. First, when was the last review of the actual building in terms of PMs, ADA compliance internally with the building in terms of meeting our lease requirements? Do we know when the last audit was? And are we up to speed with those lease requirements and?
I'm going to let Harbor Director answer that one.
Thank you. Mr. Harbor Director.
Yeah, I mean, as part of this project, they've done a fair amount of engineering and view of different aspects of the building and in terms of what they're doing, construction and architecturally, they're having to make sure that things are in compliance and in good shape. There have not been any issues with that site in terms of compliance in general of tenant improvements and including the revetment and the water improvements. There was, because there really isn't much there fortunately, there's no seawall or anything. But in general, the site has been well maintained over the decades, even before the bastions were tenants here.
And complying with lease terms, in terms of payments up to date and everything, no issues?
Yeah, there's never been any issues.
Just my usual general questions, yeah.
Yeah, everything's been good.
Okay, great. And Cindy, the coastal access signage, maybe could you go back to that slide and just a couple of questions?
Did you want this or the site plan?
That one.
Okay.
The, which signs are being proposed for coastal access? Is it?
It's the ones on the right.
On the right hand side?
One through four. And they all have different messages depending on where they're located on the plans. So there'll be public access signs on the street side in Embarcadero, right by the sidewalk. There'll be signs on the rear. And then there'll also be a sign at the northwest connection by the Salt Building.
And is that sizing and the type of lettering consistent with our other signs?
It is.
Along the Embarcadero?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there's continuity with that. Great. The coastal commission low-cost room availability issue, has that been addressed or have we talked about that? Or is that something that we're going to write more or less the same letter as it goes to coastal with regard to the requirement for the availability of whatever percent rooms being low cost, et cetera?
It's not applicable to this project because they're not adding rooms.
Okay.
We are holistically dealing with that in our visitor serving accommodations policy for our general plan and local super program update, though.
Good. I'd like to see that holistic thing addressed as well. And let's see, I had one other question. And that was, I just needed to ask, what took a year for it to get back here basically, or 11 months? Just the process in general?
I think it was the process in general. So after the last February council meeting, staff gave them an after-action letter. I believe these plans themselves were, are dated November 2017. We did have some back and forth throughout the, I want to say it was throughout the summer of '17 regarding the ADA issue. So granted, it took the applicant a while to put together plans, but I think probably a good amount of that was determining how the project would meet ADA compliance and then referring it to our certified access specialists. So there was a lot of back and forth with staff and the applicant.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your work, appreciate it. That's all the questions I have.
Marlos.
Okay, well, I just have a couple and they all relate to the parking issue. I am reading Mr. Melanis, is it Melanis', letter, and he's actually asking to put the parking on the same side of the street as Gray's. So not across the street, but in those, so not, could we look back at that again? So not back in the corner, correct?
Right.
Or across the street?
Right. He's asking for it to be on the same side of the street and staff's recommendation was to be on the east side of Embarcadero, just so that we don't have anything in that street end that would preclude, you know, that as being city right of way, that might preclude future design options, you know, that's, we look to the west, we look to the water and not blocking that in.
Yeah, your current recommendation then is to put it back in the corner of that same lot. Is that correct?
It is, and that lots, there's usually spaces available in it, other than during the busiest times, as opposed to on the water side, which those spaces are almost always full. And they're used much more, so it doesn't make a lot of sense from a use standpoint to put it there. From a staff standpoint, I think let's put it where the spaces are more available, I guess is kind of where we're coming from.
Right. And this may be a question you can't answer at the moment, but I'm just kind of curious to know how many spaces we've now sort of said hotels could use of the public spaces that are available down there?
Well, actually, that's an easy question to answer.
Oh, good.
So we dedicated 10 spaces for Roses Landing based on their pending 10-unit hotel project coming forward, and then these two spaces. So it's 12.
It's just 12.
Well, actually 10, because we haven't approved this project, so, but 10 have been approved.
Were there any approved in the remodel of the Off the Hook site?
Not yet. So the Off the Hook project, they did apply for their CUP as required by their, you know, lease arrangements, and that's currently under review.
Because I thought they were going to ask for some perks.
They may have, and I haven't gotten yet to that page of the application that's in my inbox.
All right, thank you. And I know that in the staff report, you talk about a proposed cost for leasing these spaces. And are you asking for the council to make a decision on that tonight? Or is, can we approve that without settling on an amount that we would lease those spaces for?
You could approve it without an amount. We did discuss that with the applicant and let them know that, gave them the same direction that what was discussed with the Roses Landing project, which is that it will be worked out through the lease negotiation process. The applicant response to us is that they wanted to have some kind of surety with the CUP process and they wanted to have that information now rather than just, you know, waiting until they got to the lease process. So we asked them to propose something to us, and what they proposed is the comparing metered parking rates for those other three cities, Pismo Beach, Cayucas, and San Luis Obispo. cities, Pismo Beach, Cayucas, and San Luis Obispo, that are identified in the staff report.
Right. But you, and your recommendation was different from what the applicant's?
Right. So they want, they divided it by the three cities, and they came with, you know, a lower number than what staff would recommend. I would say that, you know, Moro Bay is very different from each of those other cities. But if we had to make a recommendation, the recommendation was to compare it to the rates at City of Pismo, because them being a comparable coastal city, small city like Moro Bay, whereas San Luis Obispo is, you know, four and a half times larger. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. What about phasing of the project? There's three phases to it. How do we understand how the phasing and the timing of that is going to work? Do you know? Or is that more of an applicant, when Kathy comes up?
The applicant could probably speak to that. I put that on the slide, just because I wanted to bring that to the council's attention. I know sometimes these projects take a while to get approved. They did identify that on page one of their plans set. So if the council were to approve it, that's what's identified on their plans. It's not included as a condition of approval in the resolution, largely because they still do have to go through the coastal commission process. You could lock it in as a condition if you so chose.
Okay. And I think most of my comments are for discussion, so I'll go ahead and move to public comment at this point, and then we'll invite the applicant. So Barry Brannan, and then Jean Doughty.
Thank you. Councilman Mayor Barry Brannan, Moro Bay. The Thai Bounty is really a bounty. This gentleman came from another country, spent eight years bootstrapping himself up. He has a menu that, I had a Cuban sandwich for lunch. If you haven't had that treat, I suggest you do it. And here you are, at his prime time of day, 3:00 PM in the afternoon, between 3:00 PM and 11:00, basically at his front door, saying his customers can't park there. That's, I was so shocking to see that, when the two obvious places are right next to the kayak center. And your customers that go into Gray's Inn can get out of their cars, be on the sidewalk, and go to the Gray's Inn. And to have them park in front of an entrepreneur's restaurant that is really bootstrapped and has really made something, this is not property that the city leases, because it's not on that side of the Barcadero. It's on private property. So here you are excluding a piece of property that's private property from parking in front of them. And to me, unless I misunderstand, it just doesn't seem fair. And I'd like to suggest that you consider something else. And the most obvious thing is the place that's right there on the west side of the Barcadero, where there's two cars parked already. And maybe you don't make it 3:00 PM, maybe you make it 5:00 PM. But what you're proposing is confiscatory. Thank you.
Thanks. Jean Doughty? Jean, you have a public comment speaker slip? Or is that for the presentation?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I was going to, for public comment then, and then I was just going to invite the applicant up. So Jean and Kathy, are you speaking to this? Sorry. I guess I got confused. I thought there was public comment, and then I was going to invite you up as the representative. So sorry about that.
No, that's okay. I normally come up right after the report. So, good evening, council members and Mayor Ayers. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here this evening representing the Gray's Inn project. We are glad to be back before the council tonight for the Gray's Inn project for the final approvals. And as staff mentioned, we're back with revisions for the pole sign, the ADA sidewalk, the parking as per the council task from the last city council meeting. Since staff has provided the details in a written and oral report, I'm going to forego any comprehensive discussion on the revised plans, but rather focus my attention on the parking, which is the cause of concern for the bastions. We have tried to work with city staff on solution to the parking, but we feel that we are left with a three-unit hotel, which has three parking spaces for 30-plus years, and now are going to be required to forfeit two spaces for one ADA space. The Gray's Inn has an older clientele and has kept that base for a very long time because of the special amenities, including the in-room kitchenettes and the ease of parking onsite. And this is all extremely important to the bastions. Unfortunately, we are at a crossroad with the city on the determination of whether or not this project actually needs to include a van-accessible parking space. We hired a specialty ADA consultant to look into this issue for us, and he did not come up with the same conclusion as the staff did, and that is required by the California Building Code for this upgrade. I recognize staff has offered to review this determination from our specialist. However, we believe, in all honesty, that we would not be able to be successful in this endeavor opposing code consultants. Rather than spending any more time and effort, we've modified the plans accordingly and resubmitted to get back to this hearing. Therefore, we are asking for council consideration tonight for support for an alternative option. The first option the bastions would like to present, beyond coming to the conclusion that an ADA space is not necessary, is to allow the three parking spaces to remain onsite and let them install an ADA space on the Barcadero in front of the gallery building. The installation of an ADA space onsite would be limited to hotel guests only and not available to the public. Since the Gray's Inn does not have ADA rooms, this parking space, for the most part, will sit idle. The bastions believe that installing an ADA space in front of the gallery will be a positive joint effort between them and the city, where the public can benefit as well by allowing them to retain their valuable onsite parking. As a side note, I will mention the closest ADA space is at least a block away at the end of Marina Street, or next to Marina Square at the street end. And there is none south of this project until you reach the parking lot near Thailand's Park. So it would be valuable to install an ADA parking space in this location. The second option is to provide a parking on the street at the end of Driftwood, as discussed in your report. The bastions feel this will cause a hardship to the hotel guests and run the risk of losing some of their visitors to other hotels that provide onsite parking. Nonetheless, the council, if the council feels it's necessary for the bastions to give up their two out of three spaces, then I would respectfully request, on their behalf, that the city consider this hardship and allow the two parking spaces at a reduced cost. After researching the parking costs for the three areas shown in your report, the bastions feel that a fair and equitable approach to an annual fee should be based upon the diversity of all three towns, the parking demand, and the average total cost of parking on a daily basis, and then by hour. They came to the conclusion that an annual fee of $1,705 for the two parking spaces would be a reasonable expectation by any person seeking a similar experience in Moro Bay. We also understand that the new hotel project at Rose's was approved with the use of city property for parking, and will be paying a fee for the use of these parking spaces. But this project differs from Rose's project, so that we do not feel it is fair to assess this project as a like-kind. By that, I mean that this property currently has the three parking spaces, with two that are going to be required to be removed to install the one ADA space. Second, there is no increase in hotel space or other amenities that would give the bastions added revenue source, but rather this project is a public benefit by adding the sidewalk, the vertical access, and the harbor walk. There will also be a small reduction in the square footage for the gallery to accommodate the new ADA sidewalk and entryway. Third, the project, like Rose's, has benefit to, third, a project like Rose's has a benefit to spread across several rooms and making it financially feasible. Last, I would say that this project differs from Rose's and potentially others, because there is currently adequate onsite parking versus projects that do not have any parking, but are asking for city to, for new parking dedications for a new hotel use. In conclusion, this project has made several modifications and has gone through the process, and is becoming quite costly for a small business. The bastions are just trying to ask the city for their understanding to achieve a fair and equitable solution to all these issues. On behalf of the bastions, I would like to ask the council for support for the first option tonight, to allow them to construct an ADA space on the Barcadero to meet the needs. If not, I would respectfully request for your support for a reduced annual fee, as presented in the second option tonight. Finally, the bastions are supportive of all the other modifications and the conditions as presented. I'm going to conclude my part of the presentation, but I, hearing some of the questions before I came up here, I made some notes, so I'll take a moment and address those while I'm here. Red, you asked about parking across the street. I'd like to point out that, and another speaker mentioned that, that the parking would be not deterring from the restaurant across the street, because the restaurant does have their own parking lot right now. So this is just parking on the street end. We've tried to put parking there on the end of Driftwood, as close as we could to the Barcadero, to make it convenient for the hotel guests to get across the street and get to the hotel. And the further that you put them away from the hotel, and the hotel says, you've got to park in the far corner back there, is really a deterrent for the hotel. Matt, I'd like to ask you your questions about the harbor walk and the materials. Part of the harbor walk will be made of the composite decking, and the other part will be made of the translucent fiberglass grating. The reason why there's a mixture between the two is because the area that's over the top of the rock riprap will be the composite decking. And there's no need to use the fiberglass grating in that particular section, because it's over the rocks and eelgrass doesn't grow. Any area that's over the water a little bit, especially along the, where it makes the connection to the Salt Building, we're going to be putting in the fiberglass grating there to allow any light to penetrate, because it will be over the water. The piling lifespan, basically the pilings that are down there right now will be needing to repair in the next few years. So by sleeving the pilings, which is certainly taking a metal steel sleeve and going over the top of the existing pilings, it's almost like getting new pilings. So you don't really care what the lifespan of the wood piling is left inside the steel pile. It's the new steel pile. And traditionally, those, they expect at least 20 years for steel pilings. And the new pile that's being proposed will also be steel. Lucy, Marlos, you asked about the parking lot and the cost. As I said tonight, this is just becoming a more and more hardship for this small business. The public speaker talked about a hardship for the business across the street. I think that's why we're asking you for the understanding for, if you charge parking for a reduced cost, since it's not like everybody else. Jamie, on your phasing, we've got on the first page that the first phase will be no later, commence no later than January 1st, 2019, which is about a year from now. So that gives us time to be able to get through the coastal commission process, and then back here to the city to get a building permit. So any expectation of any sooner would be a very tight schedule. Phase two will be commencing no later than November 1st, 2020. And phase three is no later than November 1st, 2020 as well. And I'd be happy to go into the details for each phase if you want. Thank you for your time. I appreciate your support.
Kathy, thanks for that. Jean, you up for representative as well?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Everybody got to talk? No, I get to talk.
Okay, set the timer, Dana.
Okay. This is really a small site. I mean, it's one of the smallest in the Barcadero. Building on the waterfront is arguably one of the hardest tasks, and very expensive to work on the Barcadero. Engineering-wise, the soils are either soft or rock-hard. In that particular area, we have revetment that's underneath there. Not only do, on structures that you have like normal loads imposed on a building or waterfront structure, not the vertical loads, but the horizontal loads, you're subject to tidal waves. You're subject to ships running into them. The structure has to go up and down, back and forth with the tide. You've got the environmental, harsh environmental, things are rusting or rotting. It's really difficult to build down there, and expensive. And then we want to implement all the environmental issues and restrictions and conditions on the waterfront. A sidebar on the eelgrass, I sit on the Harbor Advisory Board Eelgrass Committee. A lot of eelgrass in the back bay has gone away. But it's all coming back. We're seeing it coming up all around the whole oyster beds. In the Barcadero part, it is flourishing. There are parts that are 600% more than they were five years ago. So we are, you know, we are protecting the eelgrass, and we are nurturing it as best we can. And then we also have to implement all the different handicap regulations when possible. These are some of the conditions that we have to work in. And in the environment of that particular area, is it economically viable? It's tough to make money on that part of the Barcadero. You look at Gordon Hill and Smith Hill's projects that they just finished, you know, a couple of years ago, they've had to really struggle to make sure that that's going to be an economical contest. You look at Abba's next door, and we all know that he's left the building. It's a vacant building except for the ice cream. You look at Ken Scott's building in Astero Inn. He sold the building after he spent all this money, because he just couldn't keep it going. You look at Associated Divers down there, they're rethinking about what they can do on their lease site. So it's really tough to make a buck down there. And so I'm just trying to tell you how hard it is to work down there. And the history on this really quickly is that when Todd and Tamara purchased the lease site from Josie, we were just going to put in a harbor walk, a vertical access, and put an eight-foot sidewalk. And that was more or less in the scale of the size of the building and what they could afford to do down there. After we had it surveyed, we found out that the lease site to the north of Abba's Restaurant, somehow, somebody made a mistake in the planning department, planning commission, building department, building inspectors, somebody made a mistake in the city, that they didn't make them build a harbor walk to the edge of their lease site. They shut it close, more than two feet away from the lease site. Subsequently, you're now, under your harbor comments, are you asking this to get a consent of neighbor to build on that two feet?
And just, I know the buzzer just went off. I'm including this in the agent presentation, under the 10-minute time limit. So I'm just, so people that are listening, so I'm saying, I'm just saying, keep going. But for people that are watching and listening that the buzzer went, that we're going under the premise that we have 10-minute presentation for the agent, which you are included. So keep going.
There's a point to all this.
And I'll just ask you to wrap it up. Thank you.
So as a consequence of them building it two feet short, you are requiring the Gray's to substantially pay for supporting and cantilevering out over into their building. We'll have to put in additional piling, that's $10,000, to additional beam to support over to the two feet that they're not, they weren't responsible for. You're asking them to pay for it. On the street side, when we were only going to put in an eight-foot wide sidewalk, the survey shows that now there's probably an eight-inch difference between the edge of the curb and the door to the Gray's Inn. Now, under a building code, a building code can make an exception to the handicap regulations to allow a little steeper ramp. That didn't happen. Subsequently, we have to put in a handicap ramp. We have to completely demolish the whole Barcadero sidewalk in front of the lease site. We'll have to raise the sidewalk eight inches. We'll have to put in a handicap 2% slope up to the doorway. We have to demolish part of the building and set it in four feet to have the handicap landing there. Because consequently of doing that work on the building, we now have to provide a van handicap stall in the parking lot, which eliminates two parking stations, basically. So it costs lots and lots of money to do this, and I just hope that there's enough money made left over on the Gray's Inn to support this. So I support a, be easy with them. That's all I can say.
All right, Jean, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks. We might get to that. So at this point, we'll close public comment, but should we have questions for the agent? We can open up that public comment portion of this and move on. And with that caveat, are there any further questions for the applicant at this point before we move on?
Well, I think my question is for Scott, but I'd like to know who owns the parking lot we're talking about? Are these both city parking lots?
Those are our parking spots, yeah. Those are ours.
Okay. I thought I misunderstood. Somebody suggesting it was, when it was, they're both public parking lots right now.
It's right-of-way. The Thai Bounty parking lot is right over here.
Right, right.
And that's private property.
That's private, but not the one we're talking about.
But I do observe that Thai Bounty customers
Sure.
Have been known to
Because it's close, yeah.
Park in that area, and not that I know anything about that.
Okay. I'll start off with some discussion points at this point. First, I want to just thank the project, thank everybody for working on the project. I know when this came to us, it might have caught the applicant off, a little bit off guard on maybe some of the council's dialogue and input on this. I know I led some of the conversation about the pole sign. And in regard to the lease sites, responding both to Kathy and Jean, and Jean particularly, certainly, as we certainly, as we address all of our lease sites, I, you know, our waterfront master plan there, the harbor walk, that's something that we are obligated to do. And I understand that that comes with a financial obligation from the applicant. And the premise in there is that the city negotiates terms on the lease in which it makes it financially viable for the investment and that there is a return on that. So there definitely is a partnership in how we operate that, and I know Kathy understands that as well. So it's incumbent upon us to be able to carry out the responsibility of the waterfront access, the pedestrian features of all that. And then during any kind of lease arrangements that, you know, we understand what the investment is, that we are appropriately agreeing to terms to which the applicant to get a return on that. So I think that's part of the deal. And as we look at this particular lease site, which is a long-established lease site, the Grays Inn, you know, it's reached a time where it needs to be updated. Part of that is the harbor walk and some of the access in front. So really pleased to see those features added to it. I, you know, I think there's only, you know, with the exception of the Kayak Horizons, who knows how that'll turn out, but that'll be another one that'll continue on. So there is that responsibility to continue the movement of the waterside harbor walk access and the lateral access and the sidewalk improvements as well. So based on the drawings that I reviewed, seeing the additions of, I know there's a curb gutter height adjustment to make the access into the door. I think that's the type of improvements that need to be done at some point because when this was originally put in, the ADA requirements weren't there. So at some points, we will have to be making those adjustments, which at this time, I feel we are doing. So I just want to say thanks for bringing it back with the changes that have been made. I asked staff, thanks Cindy and Scott for meeting with me and talking me through this. I think some of my questions, I was looking at, so we removed a trash can location for the onsite trash cans. I was kind of curious where the new trash can locations were. There were trash can locations down on the harbor walk. Those were little features that were pointed out. I just made a note that, you know, there should be closures on them. We shouldn't have open trash can containers for the birds and things like that. So that was just my comment on that. The parking, I do have a question for staff on the van ADA access parking and how that, where we are there. I didn't get into that with you earlier today. Considering some of the other lease sites, and the one that comes to mind particularly would be the Anderson Inn has ADA access, but not van ADA access, as I understand it. So maybe you can talk through where we're at. And even if it wasn't van ADA, it would still be ADA, so it would be sized fairly close to what it is, I'm assuming? Please elaborate.
Yeah, correct. And the requirement is for van ADA parking in this location. And once they started reconfiguring the parking and moving things around, it really triggers the requirement that you have it, they're supposed to have it anyway.
Scott, bring it here.
Sorry. Yeah, I'll get closer.
Stop yelling, Jean.
Appreciate it. So, yeah, the reconfiguration of the parking lot triggered the requirement and had us looking at it. Okay, now you're changing the parking area there and you don't have ADA parking. Are you required to have it? So we looked into it. Yes, you're required to have it. And if you're going to have ADA parking requirements and you're only going to have one space, it has to be van accessible, hence the reason it's van accessible. There's not a dramatic difference between that and standard accessible parking, but if you're just going to have one, it has to be van accessible. I don't know what, I don't know what decision was made on Anderson Inn. I'd have to go back and look at the approvals and what this scenario was there that we...
You know, and it's interesting, there's no ADA room in this. And I don't know necessarily, I don't know necessarily what the Astero Bay, the Astero Inn, but, you know, as we're updating, you know, I would think that that would be part of the equation as well. And, you know, as I speak to that, you know, I know they've got access to first floor, so there's not really anything that prohibits. It's probably just a matter of features. You know, is the door widened up into the bathroom? Are there, you know, those types of features? So I, you know, when I heard the comments that, you know, there's not currently ADA rooms, you know, that it did kind of bring up some antenna in that regard. And I would think that, you know, all of those things would be part of the upgrade at this point in time, simply because that's in the day and age we are in. So, you know, so you responded a little bit to the van portion of it.
It really depends on, I don't think, it's not a requirement necessarily that they bring up every single thing in their facility to meet ADA requirements. And then usually there's a priority or a hierarchy. It's access into the building, right? You know, you want to be able to get into the building. It's bathrooms, it's parking, it's those types of things. And so there's a hierarchy that goes along with that. And then typically when you have, depending on the number of rooms that you have, you'll have ones that are ADA accessible. This one, when it was originally built, didn't seem like that was the case. Obviously, they didn't require it then. I'd have to do a little more research to determine what the, you know, how that happened. But we're getting it where they're supposed to have it. I mean, even if we didn't require it, that building's required in the commercial studio space that's in there, they're required, it's required to be accessible regardless of whether we require them to make the change or not. It becomes a little bit of an issue, though, if we're reviewing projects and bringing things forward and we're not triggering that requirement when we realize that they're not compliant. And so that's where this came from. We do run this by our certified access specialists. We contract for that service. We do not have in-house services that do that. We contract with California Code Check for that.
And so with the exception of the room, per se, everything else is brought up to code as far as the bathrooms, the interior bathrooms into the service area?
The, I mean, so the paths that they're putting in, those will be accessible and have the correct slopes, as will the connection along the rear for the lateral access compliant as well.
Yeah. So, okay. Then the only other comment, as far as parking goes, I would support the off-site parking on the east side. I would prefer to move it away from the location that's proposed. And maybe, I understand the applicant's request, but from a long-term standpoint, if it's going to be long-term parking there in essence and dedicated for that, I would request that we move it just, you know, distance back from that corner. So that's more for the visitors that are coming and going. And I would just note, probably one of the things not to consider on the west side is, you know, things like a boat parade, where you might have an event and you want that waterfront, waterside access for those types of things. I would think you'd want to remain the waterside parking unencumbered that way, just as a note. And then that's my input on the parking location. And then the other one would be, I'd be interested to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say on the price for that. But I would want to see us have a three- to five-year timeline on the parking contract and that it be revisited and adjusted appropriately and not get into something that's in perpetuity or tied to the lease some way. So those are my discussion points on there. I think that those are my discussion points. And so I'll move to the left and maybe Red can start off in the discussion points as
I'm just going to agree with the mayor. The price for parking, I understand that it's a burden to the applicant, but I also understand that the city has a responsibility to get a fair return for our citizens. And so I would go along with the recommendation to use Pismo Beach as a comparable. So.
Scott, I do have a question rather than any sort of discussion. And that is, Ms. Novak brings up, and actually Jean brought up the idea of putting the ADA parking on the Embarcadero. What are, what's blocking that idea? Or is there a block, putting the ADA parking on the Embarcadero and not?
It becomes public.
Okay.
It doesn't meet the requirement for their business necessarily. It doesn't meet their requirement for their business necessarily. It becomes public at that point.
Okay. But in the same
And I also don't know that we vetted that scenario.
Okay, because in the same concept, if they're parking across the street and they're dedicating that parking there, then that's public property, public parking that becomes private, so...
That we would be leasing.
Leasing. Could the same thing be said for the ADA parking in front of their place? Is that possible?
Discussion for the council to have.
So that's a discussion.
And I might drag reluctantly Rob into this discussion about how that looks.
If I may, it's much more difficult for the city to be able to lease public right-of-way, that's actually used as public right-of-way, to one party as opposed to having it available for the public use for parking. So I don't think we would have the authority to lease a spot on a public street to one private user.
And, okay, so following that, Joe, help me through this. Because that's parking across the street on Driftwood, so that's not a public right-of-way? That's why we can lease it?
It's, although I heard it described as public right-of-way, it's really not used for vehicular travel.
I follow that, okay. Because that was kind of an intriguing idea, was to keep the ADA parking if possible. But I understand what you're saying, that we cannot because it's a public right-of-way, considering that this is...
You could put the ADA parking there, but you couldn't restrict it to only be used by patrons of Grays Inn, which I don't think satisfies the ADA requirement to begin with.
Which is the issue that I'm fairly certain exists, but again, I'm not an expert on ADA and would have to go research that a little bit further. Whether you could put it out in the street and have it count for their ADA parking requirements because it's available to the general public and then not for the use of the facility that's there.
Even if signage is up and they're paying parking fees?
That runs into the issue that Joe brought up a minute ago, and then that's right-of-way that's used for regular public purposes.
I'm just talking through investigating because in terms of this concept, I mean, we have a hotel with three parking spots and just trying to talk it all the way through. In terms of discussing this, if we can't go that route, then I agree with the mayor and Red that I would like to see some sort of dedicated parking over across in Driftwood. And if it became, I think it'd be okay to put it on the corner, the restaurant there on the corner, they do have dedicated parking and they have, but then on some weekends, Harbor Fest is one, all that parking is taken, but the Embarcadero is taken. So right now, I'd like the idea, if we can't go with moving the ADA spot and putting the parking on Driftwood, and I would be willing to deal with wherever, you know, if it's not there on the corner, somewhere else. And also, I agree with what Red and Jamie said about the parking fees, sticking with Pismo.
All right, John?
Thank you. Thanks again, Steph, for your work. And thank you to the applicant and consultants for everything that you've done as well. And, you know, from my perspective, economically, it's difficult to make a unit as small a scale as the Grays Inn to be economically feasible. So I understand the economic constraints of that and the difficulties financially that one might have in trying to make that scale business work. And so that speaks loudly to me as a business owner, trying to be successful and realizing some of the same issues, although I don't have to deal with Embarcadero-related leases and those kinds of things. I agree with the comments that have been made. I would support moving the parking to the south easterly, I guess, portion of the Driftwood parking lot, if I'm saying that correctly. And I also would be in favor of actually going with the reduced rate for leasing the spaces for a limited period of time, as was recommended by the mayor of, let's say, three years until a longer-term parking program was developed for all of the hotel spaces that will be there on the Embarcadero. I think that the improvements that are being made are excellent and will add great, greatly to the appeal to the public, and I appreciate that. And with regard to the request for eelgrass, I would agree with what Ms. Novak said. I'm fine with that. I do believe, as Jean mentioned, that there's a viable program, that the Harbor Advisory Board is working, and that seems to be working well. And so I have no problem with accepting condition, is it eight or nine? I see nine on one place, but anyway, modifying condition, nine or eight, whatever it is regarding eelgrass, to the request that the applicant has actually asked for. So with that, I think that covers all the issues for me.
Marlis, thanks, John.
And I agree with John. Well said. Yeah, yeah. I agree on all of the issues that he mentioned, including the reduced fee for a short period of time. I think this is an issue that the full council needs to address because we're having more requests for leasing of some of our spaces in our public parking lots, and we should actually look at that as a separate issue. So for a limited amount of time, I would go with the reduced fee.
The reduced, can I clarify there? The reduced fee of 1705, which is the requested amount? Okay.
Yes, that's what I was recommending.
Okay, just making sure that we weren't looking at the table that we put together and looking at 2190.
Yes.
The one that was requested.
The one that was requested.
Yeah, we'll tie that together, yeah.
Okay. So we started out, so we're in agreement on the parking on Driftwood. Did we nail down the location? We had a little discussion on, it may be okay where it is. We're moving it. I think we had consensus that moving it to an outer location, and I would leave that, unless you want to dial something in right now or feel comfortable that staff and the applicant work that out.
Is it the right-of-way area at this point?
I believe so, unless there's, unless, you know, we want to get into specifics.
Scott, when you say the right-of-way, and that's on that segment, on the eastern part of Driftwood? Because it was brought up earlier by Mr. Brandon to go to the western part, but I do believe in front of Kayak Horizons, there's only two spots. Got it?
Yeah.
One more of the names.
I'd be comfortable with that if everybody else is. Okay. And then, so the locations worked out. And then the fees, we, Red had mentioned Pismo fees. Matt was in concurrence, and we have John and Marlis on reduced fees. I would agree with the reduced fees at this point, especially for the, we should determine a three- or five-year time period and to revisit that. That would be my suggestion, not, yeah, three to five years. So, and maybe you can give us some feedback on preference between the two. I'm just, I'm being a little arbitrary, but it seems like that might be a good start. Maybe you can give us some feedback on that.
I would hope, as Councilman McPherson stated, that we would have a plan in place by then, so within a three-year period to come back. So we would have something to move it to or to recognize, and then it would be moved to whatever that fee would be or whatever we would come up with at that point. That makes sense to me.
So to revisit that in three years, that'll come back to council?
Yes.
Okay. And so to see, you know, another three years, five years, whatever that may be? Okay, all right, good.
I can support that.
Okay, all right, good. So we're in concurrence with, are we in concurrence there, Matt?
So that would be the lower rate, that would be the lower rate, and for three years, and we're going to revisit that parking policy. But then writ large, we're going to be doing it, hopefully.
Comprehensively.
Got it.
And we're allowing staff and the applicant to work out kind of the inward location. And then condition number eight or nine for the eelgrass? Cindy, nine?
It's nine.
And that's in the resolution?
Okay, and that's, that's in the resolution? It's stated clearly in the resolution?
Actually, no, the, the request by the applicant was received after that resolution was released, so the resolution before you has the old condition.
Okay, so, in a motion, if we-
I could read it into the record, because it's kind of lengthy.
And then before, before we get there, so, I ask the question about where are the locations for the trash containers? Do they move that? So did, did we get that clarified in the plans?
Yes, so there is, um, business trash, and it's to be located underneath the stairwell in the front of the building, and it is proposed to be covered.
Okay.
And I, and I got that in an email today from Ms. Novak.
And then, it's, okay. Or, I think we're there then with everything. We just need to make sure that we've discussed everything appropriately, we can draft up a clear motion, and get that into the record to vote on. So, the motion would be, and I'm not going to, I'm just going to kind of draft this, it would be something to the effect of adopt, adoption of resolution number 0318, approving the conditional use permit number UPO 448 for Gray's Inn at 561 Embarcadero. We would also agree to planning commissions, modification of condition nine.
No, it would not be planning commission, but agree to the modification of condition nine as proposed by Ms. Novak.
As proposed.
Or Kathy Novak Consulting Correspondent stated January 22nd, 2018.
And then, and then the other part of the motion, as we get to restating that, is-
Reduced parking?
Reduced.
It's to amend, it's to amend condition number 20, to reduce the parking fee to the 1,700, whatever amount, for three years, subject to review for increase or decrease at the end of the three years by the city council.
Okay. Could we do the parking as a separate motion? The resolution?
Oh, is it?
Yeah, in the condition. So, condition number 20, say that again, Joe?
Condition number 20 on page eight of the resolution.
Right.
Is, as it's stated, except that the price for the license agreement would be the 1,700 and whatever dollars that's noted on the staff report, that was requested by the applicant, would be for a three-year period, subject to increase or decrease by the city council after the three years.
It's not as described either, it's in a new location.
Location change as well.
There's a location change as well.
Yeah, so the first half of that condition 20, it says two parking spaces on Driftwood and Embarcadero. So that would probably be the part to modify, because it says, "as depicted and described on the 12318 city council staff report." And so we could modify that to say, to delete the "as depicted and described on the staff report," but to say, "two parking spaces on the eastern end of the street end of Driftwood and Embarcadero." Shall be signed and dedicated, dot, dot, dot.
And then include, so, just to go back, so modification of condition 20. With a license, with a fee set at 1,705 annually. Fees.
So that strikes the, strikes the last sentence of that condition then, is that correct? Or is that still standing?
Sorry, where it says, in the fourth sentence, "to a license agreement with the city for an amount commensurate with metered parking rates of 1,709 annually, subject to city council review in three years."
I would just delete the word "metered."
Okay, and then 1,705.
Just reading it, but that's-
And then we would, satisfying to the, okay, subject to three years, the parking license agreement shall be finalized, but that last sentence we would delete, as I understand it, right? In condition 20?
I would suggest you leave that, because it's compatible with the lease agreement.
So then, so condition 20 would read, "two parking spaces on Driftwood and Embarcadero as depicted and described in, on the 1-23-18 city council staff report, shall be signed for," no?
We deleted.
We moved them.
Yeah.
It's going to be as determined by staff.
As determined, okay, as, as determined, okay. As determined by staff. And then, "shall be signed for dedication to Gray's Inn guest from 3 to 11 daily. Applicant shall enter into a license agreement with the city for an amount commensurate with parking rates of 1,705 annually for three years, subject to increase or decrease thereafter approved by council."
I would just take out "commensurate" and put "equal to."
Okay, equal to. So that's, that's condition 20, so we'll have to tie all this together, and then condition nine was-
Accept this.
Okay, so we accept, we accept condition nine as presented by the applicant.
Yes, and if you wanted to be more precise, you could say, "by the applicant correspondent stated January 22nd, 2018," because then it links it to this particular letter request.
Okay, okay, and so that covers condition nine, 20, and then the parking, the fee, the location, and what else? Did we get everything else?
You got it.
I think so, so.
Really?
Yeah, you-
Can we do it?
Yeah, if you've got this.
So, make a motion to approve resolution number 03-18, resolution of the city council, the city of Morro Bay, California, approving conditional use permit number UP 0-448 as concept slash precise plan for construction of new HarborWalk lateral access installation slash sleeving of piles, comma, vertical access pathway, comma, sidewalk and parking lot improvements, and miscellaneous building facade improvement, improvements at Gray's Inn, located at 561 Embarcadero Road, comma, also known as city lease site 63-64 and 63W-64W, with amendments as stated to condition nine and 20. Period.
So we have a motion and a second, motion by Mr. Hennings, second by Marla's. Discussion, just clarification on the motion, as the condition nine was as presented by the applicant from letter received January 22nd, 2018? So, we just want to make sure that's included in the motion?
Yeah.
Yes, and can we read the language of condition number 20 now?
So, condition number 20, condition number 20 is to be read as follows, "two parking spaces on Driftwood and Embarcadero, as determined by staff, shall be signed for dedication, dedicated to Gray's Inn, guest from 3:00 PM to 11:00 AM daily. Applicant shall enter into a license agreement with the city for an amount equal to, or equal with the parking rates set at 1,700 dollars and five, 1,705 dollars annually, for a three-year period, subject to increase or decrease with council approval."
And then the last sentence.
And the-
The parking license agreement shall be-
The parking license agreement shall be finalized prior to issuance of building permit, and shall be incorporated into the applicant's master lease agreement for the city lease site. That's also included in that, okay?
Amendment, yeah.
Amendment. So who's been, who's been taking on, Dana's got all that. All right, so one, one more time, we've got the, we've got the motion and the second, and we did amend it to include the condition nine to be from the January 22nd, 2018 applicant correspondent, so that condition nine would involve that language. And then, condition 20 is the modified to read as previously stated. Do I need to state that one more time? Are you okay on that? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Five-zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, thanks, you guys. And then, moving on to C1, thanks, our Measure Q Committee, for sticking this out with us. Jen, are you going to open this up for us? All right, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, good evening. While our chairwoman makes her way up to the podium, if you could hand that over to Barbara, please, thank you.
Thank you.
The Citizens Finance Advisory Committee has met twice while I've been here with the city, so just wanted to recognize them and thank them. We've had a, I've enjoyed working with them so far, enjoyed their input. Our chair is going to do the presentation tonight, she's going to talk about the 1617 Measure Q transactions, the committees reviewed those and provided feedback, and then, attachment to dear staff report is the subcommittee's report on the CAFR and the recommendations. We've reviewed all those, think that they're reasonable, and appreciate the feedback from the committee. It did pass out the final draft of that report earlier, there's copies in the back table for the public. The only difference from that and what was provided in the staff report are the dates on page one, and then the removal of the header that says "draft." There's nothing substantively different other than that. So with that, I'll pass it over to our chair.
Barbara, thanks.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, council, welcome, staff and citizens. Barbara Spagnola here, Chair of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, and I'm here to do a very brief presentation on our review of the Measure Q transactions for the year 2016 to 17, the fiscal year, and also a brief summary of some of our recent activities. We met as a committee, the CFAC committee, in both October and November of 2017 to review and discuss all the previous fiscal year transactions, went through all of them, with the help of staff, of course. And the members on my committee are listed there, and two of them, I'm happy to say, John Irwin and John Martin are also here in the audience, in case you have any questions for any of us, so we appreciate their support. Basically, the Measure Q financial summary, the tax revenue for the last fiscal year, including the Cal grant, was approximately 1.1 million dollars. And for those of you that like metrics, the tax revenue from the Measure Q specifically went up 9.9% from the previous year. So, so that's good news. That's exclusive of the Cal grant, which was approximately 39,000. So, and that was for, I think, recycled tires, it just happened to be categorized in the general ledger with the Measure Q, but what, our comments are addressing Measure Q monies and how they were spent. The total expenditures for the last fiscal year were approximately 1.5 million. That obviously is significantly more than the revenue. I did not include the previous year carryover fees, sometimes that's confusing with the unallocated and allocated portion. Suffice it to say, yes, spent 400,000, 426,000, I believe, more than the revenues, however, that, there was a significant carryover from the previous year, and you may recall, the past years, we have been alternating the street maintenance expenditures every other year, so that's what caused that, so. And, that should explain that. Okay, so, moving right along, where was this money spent? Typical was in previous years, fire department, 340,000, that's number one for the fire station debt service on the new fire station, and for the vacation relief persons and overtime so that we have four firefighters on duty, per shift, four personnel. The police department spent 72,000 of that, primarily on the school resource officer, which spends most of the time at Morro Bay High School, I understand. A little bit on storm drains, creek maintenance, I included that, because one of our members thought that was very important, and we had discussed that. And the bulk of the Measure Q expenditures in that fiscal year were on 1.1 million on street maintenance, so. What did we do? We audited all those transactions, excuse me, we approved all of those transactions, they are unaudited, because the audit is still going, in process, for the fiscal year. There is a carryover from the 2016-17 fiscal year to the next, approximately 72,000. Previous years, we made a recommendation how that should be spent, this year, we are deferring to council and staff leadership on incorporating that into this year's mid-year budget process, and decide accordingly what to do with that 72,000. And then also, we are recommending continued progress on the funding categories that were identified in the 2006 Measure Q ballot initiative, primarily streets, public safety, fire, et cetera. And then I just want to take a minute to summarize some of our other recent CFAC activities. The first thing is, we did a detailed review, a subcommittee of CFAC did a detailed review of the city's previous CAFR, that stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Review. That was the first time, to my knowledge, the city had done that, so they're to be commended for doing that. Our vice-chairperson, John Martin, sitting in the audience, had a key role in doing this review, and I'm not going to go over all the recommendations, they're in your report, they've been given to staff, they were very well received. Our goal was to just maybe make some comments that will even make this a more readable document for the citizens, or anybody that wants to dive into that level of detail. The CAFR is done, as you know, by most best, quote, "best-in-class cities." Our goal was to commend staff for doing, taking that on, because it's an awful lot of work, and there's a lot of detail in there, and if we can make some suggestions to make it, improve it each year incrementally, that's what we'd like to do. We also continued our progress on the public-friendly budget documents, which are on your website, the city's website. This is now, not buried there, not half a dozen clicks back, dropped on, this is two clicks, and you're there at a high level. If you can read colors, you can see where the funds are, where they're going, how it's spent. It's, it's a start, and we want to improve that, and staff has procured, or will be procuring a dashboard software system that I believe will help with that, we will work closely with that to make that even better, based on citizen input. We also have initiated some subcommittee work on preparation for the budget calendar, we know you have a calendar now, we want to make some improvements and add some narrative to that, that we think might be helpful to engage more citizens in that process. So that's what that sub-bolt is about, and we would also like to continue our involvement in the city budget process, mid-year review and final year review. So I'll pause there, are there any questions?
Any questions from council? No? Great, keep going, Barb.
Oh, okay, well, I'm- Oh, okay. Well, I'm almost done. With respect to Measure Q, even though this presentation is very brief, I do want to emphasize that we understand that is our number-one major responsibility in terms of the ballot initiative. So even though I'm going through this quickly, because it's high level, I do want to assure you, we spent, the entire committee spent a lot of time on this, and we discussed not only big expenditures, but little ones as well. So we take that seriously, and we want to let the citizens know that that's part of our charter that was included in the 2006 ballot initiative. We'll continue to work very diligently on that goal. Thank you.
All right, Barbara, thanks. So, just saying, just want to say thanks, and then I'm turning to Scott for a minute, and then we'll come back to council. So Scott, please.
Yes, I wanted to thank Barbara and the entire committee for all their tireless efforts to help improve the transparency for the public, and they've been so easy to work with, with Jen and I, and very accommodating for the fact that we're very new, and we really appreciate just all the insights they've offered. Secondarily, there was a slide up there that talked about the SRO, or School Resource Officer position, which, for all intents and purposes, no longer exists because the school is not funding their portion of that. And so I think there'll be a pretty good discussion mid-year, or if not mid-year, at least the upcoming budget, about how we want to, what we want to do with that, because we still need the police officers, and there may be a better use of those funds. So that'll be a really good discussion point at mid-year and at the budget year.
And we had a little bit of a leading discussion with that at last year's budget time as well, so there's some preparation in that regard. So thanks for your remarks, Scott, and I think we maybe have some comments in that regard. Marla, if you want to make some comments there?
Well, I did want to make some comments.
Before we go in, we don't have any public comment speaker slips on this, so I'm not going to open up any public comment for this. We have any public comment? I'm looking for anybody in the audience. Anybody? None? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Well, and I do have a couple of questions for staff, but I, first of all, just wanted to thank this committee so much, and I was a part of this committee, so I feel really close to it, and it was just wonderful work. And I can't tell you how much I personally appreciate it, and how much I appreciate the three subcommittee members sitting through this entire meeting for us, to support their committee. I just, I can't say enough good things about it. And my questions for staff really have to do with, first of all, do we need to make a recommendation on the carryover funds? Or is that?
That would be probably a discussion mid-year, as they outlined in their presentation.
Yeah. Okay, so we should suggest that we approve their recommendation to do that?
Yeah, to have us take a look at it. And if it can't be addressed, then it's going to be an end-of-year kind of situation.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, I really appreciated all the comments on the audit, because I did go through the audit myself, and I know how much time it takes to do that. So I'm curious to know if we are planning on doing another comprehensive financial report on this audit, this current one that's underway right now.
So our last meeting was on the 16th, which was last week, and I shared with the committee at that point that our deadline for submitting the CAFR for recognition is January 31st. I'm not all that hopeful that we're going to meet that deadline. We did get fund statements, draft statements, Friday evening, so we've been going through and reviewing, but we do have some questions and follow-up with the auditor. So I become less convinced every day that we're going to meet that deadline, to be realistic. Having said that, we do plan to compile a CAFR document. It might not get submitted for recognition through CSMFO, but we do plan to include the statistical sections and all of that that makes up a CAFR.
Okay. And I noted in your report that you basically agreed with the CFAC's recommendations, so I just want to confirm that you really intend to listen and pay attention and take their recommendations into account.
Yes, I don't think there's anything in the report that's unreasonable. I think they're all very good suggestions. Looked at them in terms of the intent of the suggestion versus going back and looking at the 15-'16 CAFR, you know, numbers should match, acronyms spelled out, there shouldn't be misleading statements. Completely agree with all of that. If we are able to pull it together by the end of the week to submit the CAFR, we'll hit as many of those as we can, but again, with a tight timeframe. But each year, we keep, we'll keep getting better, and the committee's fabulous, so I'm sure they'll continue to provide great insight.
All right, thank you.
John?
Stole my thunder, once again. Thank you. I am the liaison to the CFAC, and I'm happy to be the liaison. This committee has morphed, as Marla has just stated, into a very active, very comprehensive, and very well-educated group of individuals that I think have become quite helpful to not only staff, but will be very helpful to the community with regard to the work that you've done. I also want to thank Messers Martin and, Irwin, pardon me, and Ms. Spagnola. Great job. I read your audit. I thought the auditor wrote it, until I re-looked at it and found out that it was you guys that actually did that. But that, it is extremely comprehensive. I'm glad to hear. As expected, staff is going to implement a majority, if not all, of the recommendations that have been made. I also want to recognize Ms. Callaway for her excellent responses to some very difficult questions at the last meeting on Measure Q, and the deep dive that the committee did in terms of asking questions on that. Again, a very robust conversation. All members participated, had very good interactive committee work, and I'm just so happy to see this committee morphing into a great, great citizens advisory committee. So thank you, staff. Thank you, committee members, for your work. Very much appreciated.
Thanks, John. Matt?
Really no discussion, but I'd like to echo what John and Marla have said. Thank you very much, CFAC, all of you. All right. Really appreciate this. And Jen, thank you very much, so glad that you're with us. This is so much, this goes so long, a long way into establishing a stronger and stronger bedrock of confidence in the community. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Matt. Red?
Saying thank you, everyone, for what you're doing for the city.
Thanks, Red. Just want to echo the same comments from my colleagues as well, and just wanted to add a couple of things. We originally had the Measure Q Committee, which Barbara was a part of as well, and more than a couple of years ago, we took a chance, not a real chance, but at one point, it was like, do we really want a finance committee? And it took a while to really put it together, and there was always the question on, we want to be thoughtful about the obligation that we're creating. One, we want to have that transparency for the community, but it does create another layered obligation for staff, and Jen is just speaking to meeting the deadline, to which, you know, I'll speak to the audit that we received, you know, all of your suggestions, just fantastic. Will we be able to get to those? Yes. Will we be able to get to the January 31 date? You know, I just feel comfortable that we're getting a CAFR for the first time, and that's a huge, that's just huge. So the successes that I see are, one, the Measure Q Committee is doing its fiscal reporting on those funds, and that's also our responsibility as council. So we're meeting those commitments for our citizens, and how we're spending those funds. And we also got to create along the way a finance committee that is, has an easy reading document for, and it's posted on the city website, that everybody can look at and start to digest and understand. And sure, you know, that'll evolve. And we've got monthly reporting now that is, you know, is new as well. So, and just want to say thanks for our three members that were sitting through tonight. It's 10 o'clock, and you're still here. Thanks very much. It's been a long night, but just really, really pleased with the outcomes of what we set out for our finance committee, and just, you know, just want to say thanks, and I think we're hitting it. So with that, I think we'll meet the recommendations of, from our finance committee as it's been presented. I'm not necessarily sure we have a motion, but.
I'll move that we accept the Citizens Oversight Financial Oversight Committee's recommendation to put the remaining Measure Q funds from 2016-'17 and have them incorporated into the 2017-'18 mid-year budget of $72,553.
Go ahead. Okay, so we have a motion, a second, and that's to accept the recommendations for the carryover?
Yes, for the carryover.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? None? All in favor?
As well as receive the reports.
Yeah.
And I was going to get to that, since it wasn't, I was just, I was going to add that to the, to follow up, since we're already in the motion, sorry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None, motion carries five oh. Also need a motion to accept the report and their recommendations.
So moved.
So we have a motion to accept the finance report?
Second.
And a second. So motion by Mr. Heding, second by Marla. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five oh. All right, that concludes item C1. Thank you. And now, moving on to item C2. Rob, authorized release of request proposal for design build of City of Morro Bay Water Reclamation Facility onsite improvements. And I'll let you take it away.
Sorry about that little delay, getting the slides up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. We're here to discuss the RFP for the water reclamation facility project. On January 17th, at a special city council meeting, council reviewed the draft RFP and made a number of recommendations for changes to that RFP. Additionally, what we're looking for is to council to authorize the release of the RFP to the three remaining design-build entities that submitted statements qualifications, that are AECOM, WM Lyles Company, a joint venture, Philance Black &amp; Veatch, a joint venture, Keywit Infrastructure West Company, and Tectra Tech, and then provide any other direction that's deemed appropriate. In addition to the, the changes that were directed by council, there was a question regarding value engineering, and make sure that that's in the contract, that already exists in the contract provisions, the draft agreement that is part of the RFQ, that the city and the successful design-build firm would share in those value engineering savings. I'm going to go through the changes to the RFP at this point. Just want to make sure that I'm in sync with the presentation going on behind me. The, we provided an addendum to the staff report earlier this morning, that, with a table that summarizes the changes, and then the details, that the pages from the RFP, where those would be included as an attachment to that. So the first one was regarding how the item is scored, and council wanted the price proposal and lifecycle costs to be 60% more or more, and combine the other components of the evaluation criteria into one technical proposal, and the attached table has been revised accordingly. Develop a scoring system for the proposed evaluation to provide a scale on how points would be assigned. We're recommending that we get together with the evaluation committee to develop that scoring rubric. An example of a scoring rubric could take the form, I'm stealing this from the city manager, his approach to a scoring rubric, instead of a, kind of a continuum of scoring rubric, to have three points, three points of evaluation, a high, medium, and a low. It really creates distinct differences in that rubric, rather than having a continuous, like, one through 10, or one through five, where you leave it up to the evaluator to pick, is it really a four and a half, or a five, or a six? Even with some detailed explanation, it does make it a little bit difficult to kind of decide on those nuances. And I think this approach, by having three distinct points that you would score against, would make distinct differences in scoring those different criteria. Expand the communication protocol to include directions to the DB teams, in case a community member contacts them about the project. Really, what we want them to do is notify us and talk about the, you know, what types of discussion that they had with the community member. We're not trying to limit the communications of the community. Add project goals and discussion of the history to the introduction. We've added that section in Section 1.1 of the performance criteria report. Make demolition of the existing wastewater treatment plant an additive alternative. We revised the RFP price proposal, include that as an additive bid alternative, and which includes the decommissioning and demolition of the existing wastewater treatment plant. We have some time before this RFP is coming back to us, and in that time, this item should come before a joint meeting with the Cayuga Sanitary District for discussion on how those costs will be shared. And I know we've reached out to the sanitary district requesting meetings, so, because the decommissioning, the existing plant is owned as a shared cost, so we do need to have that discussion with them prior to proceeding forward and awarding that portion. I should clarify, it would be best to have that discussion with them prior to awarding. Project goals and discussion added to the RFP. Item seven, remove specifics about the floor plan from the admin ops building. We removed the floor plan of the admins ops from the RFP, and leaving it more up to the design bid entity to determine what the, that form that building will take. form that building will take. Item number 8, provide information on risk allocation between city and the DB team. Are there acceptable ways for the city to take on more risk and reduce costs? So, we provided, in the performance criteria report, clear affluent requirements. We're providing the design bid entities with a baseline geotechnical report that gives indication of the soil conditions on the site. We provide, we will provide them with the recent flow study, and provide, we performed a recent flow study, and will provide the results to the design bid entities, so that they can confirm, and that will inform their design of various components of the project, including the flow equalization. And we've provided an allowance in the RFP for unanticipated mitigation measures from the pending EIR. Minimize the prescriptive nature and maximize creativity alternatives. So we've, we have this ATC process, this alternative submittal process in the RFP, and we have or equal throughout the PCR. We've added a new sentence in section 1, that basically encouraging and welcoming creativity and alternative solutions to provide capital or lifecycle costs savings without sacrificing the level of quality or performance throughout the Those were the items discussed with council. We also incorporated changes that were, came from a variety of other sources, such as the WRF CAC, and our potential funding partners, the EPA, and State Water Resources Control Board. This first one, these first two are in the table listed as items number 10 and 14. The WRF CAC had comments regarding anticipated mitigation measures, and there's a table where we've revised those mitigation measures, and they'll be made part of this document. There was some confusion. We use the acronym DBE to signify design build entity. DBE is also the acronym for disadvantaged business enterprise. The acronym for design build entity will be referred to as DB in the document. Our utilities manager, in his review of the project, as part of our technical team review, we have wanted the chemical storage changed from tanks to totes. We don't anticipate using a lot of chemicals, so using that smaller storage will be more appropriate for this size facility. Also, we wanted to add a simple vector washdown area, a concrete pad and containment, so that when our vector comes in with, after cleaning sewer lines in the collection system, has an easy place to dump waste. State board, SRF, and EPA needs the specific language for American iron and steel. DBE, as it refers to disadvantaged business enterprise, the Davis Bacon, which relates to prevailing wage, and other federal crosscutters, basically the regulations that are required. And I see that I've, that I haven't edited this slide, and we still have a vector stationed there, but we've added those sections to the RFP. And then, as far as Davis Bacon goes, we'll need to do an addendum 10 days prior to the RFP being due, with the most current Davis Bacon wage rates that are available, so that the design bid entities will have opportunity to include those in their proposals. Our entire technical team reviewed this item, and we wanted to add a separate item, line item in the cost proposal for de-watering, since it could be a substantial cost, and want to differentiate that from foundation work, site civil work that would occur. Another city staff one was change the references to program management and construction management to city and city consultants, because at this point, we are in a transitionary period, so, just to be clear on that item. That concludes the-
Rob? I'm sorry, you skipped number 6. I didn't know what, for continuity, if you just wanted to mention it.
Let me get to that one, because... Number 6 was to add project goals to the discussion history. No, it's not.
No, 6 was the landscape buffers?
6, excuse me, is to increase the landscaping buffer for the property. There's a new site plan in there that includes areas for landscape buffer. We're going to work with the design build team and the adjacent property owner on that. The site does have a certain amount of relief to it, so just adding a, kind of a tree row at the property line probably wouldn't appropriately screen the site, so we're going to have to work within the site to kind of strategically include some screening to really mitigate that item. So, we'll work with the design bid, build entities, and the adjacent property owner, to make sure that works for everybody. Sorry about that. Now that concludes the summary of changes to the RFP. Again, staff is looking for council to authorize a relief, release of the RFP to the three firms that have submitted SOQs. There was a fourth firm. They have made a business decision to pursue another project, and have withdrawn from consideration. That was the Sunt Parsons team. So we're, again, we're left AECOM Lyles, Philance Black and Veatch, Keywit, and Tetra Tech. We're also hoping that we have addressed the council concerns, based on the study session, and we welcome any other comments that council may have regarding this project. Thank you.
Alright, Rob. First, thanks for turning this around as quickly. That was a lot of work to get done, and then get it on the agenda, and understand how it is the addendum to the staff report, so thanks for all your work. Questions from council, and then I've got three speakerships for public comment on this item. Marlese?
I just wondered how many more changes we could make to this document. I know you want to put it out right away, but I'm just wondering if we have a discussion here on the dais, can we make changes tonight to it, and could they still be incorporated?
Of course.
And I was, there's just a couple of places where I was thinking about that, so that was my main question.
Okay.
Although I would ask one more. I was curious, you said you removed the diagram of the operations and administration building, but you were going to add requirements. I did not see that language in what you sent us, so-
What was that question, Marlese?
He removed, they removed the diagram of the operations and administration building, and they were going to replace it with the requirements for that building, but I did not see that in the text that you provided us.
That, those requirements were in the existing RFP, so we only sent items that we modified. So it was, it's still in the RFP requirements for the, both the maintenance building and the operations building.
So, does it have a size? Does it have a, because there was a size on the diagram, and I think we talked about making it smaller, and fewer lockers, and et cetera. So, I'm just wondering, does it say in there now how many people it accommodates, or needs to accommodate?
We didn't make any, I'm going to have to re-review that section, and we have Mike Dunley from MKN to answer the detailed questions on that.
Yeah, well, that was, I know it was an issue that we had, so I thought we would see what those require, I mean, if you didn't change the requirements, but you just removed the diagram, I, there might be a disconnect between what the requirements say, and whether or not we actually wanted as large as what it was proposed.
Okay, anything else, Marlese?
We can review, I'll review that and answer that question in a few minutes.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it. John?
Yep.
No questions. Thank you, Rob. Matt?
I do have a question. It was brought up at public comment, and it concerns Black and Veatch, being one of the, the possible people we're going to, well, the groups that we're going to release the RFP to. And being that, I guess, Joe, this is for you, is there a legal issue, being that they already have, have done and do work for the city, and then also are bidding on this job?
There's not an, actually, that was vetted very aggressively, in my discussion with the staff, when we were first deciding whether or not to be able to submit, get something from Black and Veatch, and the discussion that I had with them, and all the documentation we have, there's no legal restriction to us being able to use Black and Veatch.
So I guess, looking down the road, in terms of them having a quote-unquote insider knowledge that would aid them in the process, that-
They will not.
They do, okay. Okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
I have no questions.
Okay. Alright, we'll go to public comment. First up, Barry Brannon, then Cynthia Hawley, and then Tom Rost.
Mayor Irons and council, thank you for letting me speak. The earlier One Water program we had, pointed out the fact that if we had a RFQ, excuse me, a environmental impact report, that the One Water people could do a better job of describing what they have to study, and what the project was. And here again, we come up against the same thing. We still don't have an environmental impact report. And without that, we have in here a million dollar slush fund, that we're going to talk about somewhere down the road with a contractor. Oh yeah, this, this came up, and this came up, and this came up. And I can, I can understand how that's a fair way to deal with a contractor, but to me, when you're asking someone who's living in a very small house in Morro Bay, to say, "Yeah, it's okay for the council to put a million dollar slush fund in there, because we don't have an environmental impact report, and we don't have a specific layout or design of what we're doing," that's pretty hard to sell. On top of that, we have a situation where we're allowing each one of the bidders $75,000 to give us a proposal. Now, that's kind of nice when you hire consultants, but when you're hiring contractors to give you a bid, here again, we're talking about three contractors, that's about a quarter million dollars more. So here we're talking about a million and a quarter, basically a slush fund, because you don't pay contractors to give you bids, not in the normal world that I've, that I've worked in. Then further, we have a plot plan on here, that is a new revised site plan. And this site plan has not been reviewed by the, the committee, the, and if you look at, there's a person here in this room that knows more about flows than I do on it, and you've got this shed for this storage building, and this shed for this truck, and then you're going to pump the flow up to here, and it's going to run back down, and you're going to pump it back up again. This, this plot plan is, is, it's an embarrassment. So, I think it's appropriate not to put this out to RFP right now. I still think you need to vet it. I need you to look at it hard, and I know you hate to put it off, but we have a project manager coming soon. That person should basically give the review for us, and help you through it. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Cynthia Hawley, I don't see Cynthia, and then Tom Rost, Tom Rost, and then Kristen Hedlund.
Again, Tom Rost, Morro Bay, you have some really intelligent people, not me, in this town. Barry Brannon just spoke to you. You need to wait, get your project manager online, and let him look at this. I think you're making a real mistake in not getting your project manager online, and letting him or her have a look at this, and you're in the process of acquiring that person with your city manager and Jeff Feller. So, give that time to work before you put this out on the street. Table this movement today, until he has a chance to look at it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Kristen Hedlund, and then Tina Metzger.
Kristen Hedlund, Morro Bay resident. I just wanted to make a comment about this item number 3, that's yellow, where it says, "If a community member, or group, or any other entity, da-da-da, initiates communication with the design build team regarding the project during the proposal period, the design team member, yada, yada, yada." I would like to say that, actually, I don't like this statement. I mean, for me, here in the city of Morro Bay, as different projects take place, I like the fact that, in the past, I've been able to approach the people that are doing the job, and have an open communication, and find out the facts, rather than go by what my neighbors telling me is taking place. And so for me, I like to be able to ask people firsthand to find out exactly what's happening, and this statement right here will block me from possibly asking any of these people what's occurring. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kristen. We'll clarify some things. Tina Metzger?
Tina Metzger, resident of Morro Bay. Item 6, the conceptual layout, we should always state the design team, or who did this. Typically, on a sheet like this, it's attributed to a company, a firm, what have you. Who did this site plan layout? And why isn't that firm or name on it? And it's really hard to read. I mean, I'd get my big, huge magnifying glass out if I brought it tonight, but I didn't bring it. Also, I have similar feelings about item 3, particularly if a community member initiates communication with the design build team regarding the project during the proposal period, obviously you don't want anyone from the community communicating with the design build firm. And then you're going to provide all the information if someone did do that. Why is that, why is that wrong, to want that kind of information directly from the design bill- Why is that wrong to want that kind of information directly from the design-build team? And what guarantee do we have as community members that we will get a response to our questions? Now, in the past, I've had a lot of questions to the city, to MKN and Rick and Back, and I never got an answer. Mr. Buckingham quite a few times said that we just don't have the time. So, we need information and we need to have some kind of guarantee that we will get answers to our questions. Three minutes of public comment when we ask questions is not enough. So, what is the guarantee that we will be responded to? Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. That's all I have for public comment. Speaker slips. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Can you respond to the number three one as far as the statement? This is the highlighted item that I brought up at our last meeting in regards to contact with people on council, stakeholders. Can you, that was highlighted in, in the document that I, with the RP that I read, and I brought that up to have a stronger conversation because nobody else had necessarily brought it up, but I thought it needed to be, have some relevance. So, can you explain legally why that's in there and what we, what's, what the purpose of that is?
The goal of that item in there is to prevent bid protests. So, that we're trying to ensure that one design-build firm by communication with council, WRFCA, community members, doesn't have an unfair advantage over another firm. There's probably a hierarchy of that. Communications directly with council are more problematic than the, probably than having a conversation with a member of the public.
In addition to that, you wanna make sure that the, just as you appoint one of your staff members to be the point of contact with, with certain, at certain times, that's what we need to do, especially for this item, because a design-builder team could get confused as to what, what should they be doing in terms of responding? How should they respond? Should they give credence or weight to what an individual member of the community is giving? Or should they not? If they get conflicting information, what do they do? So, the best thing to do is have that contact be through the city, which is what is being proposed, that the, if design builder gets a contact, he lets Rob know or someone on staff know, and then the staff can prepare the, the city's response to that information.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate the clarity on that.
And just to add one thing, that's during the proposal period.
Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
Not, not when we've selected somebody.
Yep.
Yeah, so that's, that's a further clarification.
Thanks, thanks for that, John.
Although you, you, you wouldn't want your design builder to be, start down, even after they're hired, to start down a path just because 12 people said, "Start down a path."
Jamie, can I add something?
Yes.
Yeah. And Tina brought up a good point. I mean, we, after a successful bid is, you know, and a contract is let, if there's questions about the project, we fully intend to respond to those that we can. Some things we won't be able to get to right away, but we've received a lot of correspondence from constituents who are concerned about the project. I think, since I've been here, we've been really trying to respond to those as much as we can. So, we appreciate the questions that come in. They help inform our decisions moving forward and help guide the project. It's important that, that dialogue is maintained.
And part of the, part of that comment, I've had different conversations with different constituents and community members here in the audience and elsewhere where it's, you can get a lot more information meeting with staff. And some of my responses, I, they don't, they don't wanna meet with staff. They would rather spend the time with the three minutes of public comment. I think there's more opportunity for dialogue, and I think it needs to be said for, you know, the viewing public during this. It's a difficult process and I don't find any of our staff opposed to meeting with constituents and having those conversations. And so, I would encourage people to do that. There's much more room to get understanding specifically, even on something as simple as why the statement says we shouldn't be contacting council members. Always would, you know, encourage that outreach, whether it's with council. If we can't answer those questions, we, you know, point to the right people. So, those are the comments there. And then, go ahead, Matt.
So, in terms of, as Tina points out, in terms of this timeframe, and I think Barry pointed out too, this would be for the RFP process, which is two months?
Correct.
Okay, so that two months not to contact the people who are on this list to create an RFP and/or staff members, but they can't come to staff members and ask questions?
Of course.
Okay, but just not?
Well, we are not prohibiting the public from contacting the proposers. What we're asking the proposers to do is to let us know-
Oh, got it.
-that communication so that, most importantly, that we can prevent a bid protest, that one proposer doesn't have an unfair advantage over another proposer.
Okay, so this is actually the going, taking another step towards increasing or promoting the transparency, making sure that everybody feels they're on a play, evil, even playing ground.
That's the goal.
So, got it, and so, okay.
Just to be clear, it's not just we don't, we want them to tell us the contact, we don't want them responding to the contact.
Correct.
And it's just to have a fair process for bidding on the project and not have any repercussions of a protested bid-
It's because it's-
-which seems very reasonable.
It's because it's the city's process and the city wants to make sure they know what's going on in the process.
Okay. Anything else on that?
I just, not on that issue, but I'd like to ask another question of staff if I could. I just wanted to ask Scott where he is in this process of hiring a program manager, and are we going to see a RFP for that soon? And how much longer would it take us, do we think, to actually get somebody on?
Right. A lot of components to that question, it's a good one. We've looked at our own policies around the RFP and seeing, you know, there's certain thresholds, that dollar amounts require certain processes, and there are exemptions that we can use, but we still have to go through an RFP process nonetheless. We also wanna make sure we get good people into the process, thinking through all of the kind of qualifications and characteristics that are very important to council that you all clearly articulated, which was very important. My research of project managers, you don't always get one who's gonna check all those boxes. What I heard loud and clear was the fiscal agent across the board and across the board out in the community that was a paramount concern. So, I'm starting from that place. I don't necessarily have a person or type of person in mind. That all being said, Jeff Heller's already talked to a few people, Rob is reaching out to folks in his, in his realm, you know, I even talked with the finance director about folks like management partners who have project managers, who are either former city managers, former public works directors, or they were project managers in their previous career who can do these, you know, on short stints, three to five years, those kind of things. So, we're trying to be open-minded to it, but also not delaying it, you know, and moving as quickly as possible.
So, any, any estimate of time?
I mean, I would say having somebody on board in a couple of months is probably realistic. I'd like that to be sooner, but all the other things I said kind of works against soon. It's, we want the right person.
And delaying the, the RFP for two months, what would that do to?
That would delay the point where we have a guaranteed maximum price that would inform our applications to our funding partners.
And I put two months out there as kind of the worst case. I want it to happen sooner, but I'm also-
I'm just trying to understand-
Mind being mindful.
-some of the comments and think them through, yeah. Okay.
So, at first, I was responding to some of the public comment, and we're, we kinda got mixed up in questions. So, I just wanna make sure we're covering everything, and we, we have done that. So, I'll just, now, I guess we'll get into the final part of this discussion. And Marlis, it sounds like you had some additives, and I'm hoping that you have something for us to get through that, and, and we can, we can do that. And I'll look to Red to maybe start us off with discussions and where we wanna go, and then we'll just work our way back down to you.
I am satisfied that Rob has answered all of our requests from last meeting. So, I'm ready to approve this RFP pending what I hear from Marlis.
Matt? Good, okay. I'm ready to move on, and I, we just do need to reiterate, thanks for putting, you know, getting all the work together. I will also reiterate that unless council, I know we, through public comment and other, there's requests that we consider pausing. I don't see anything that would lead me to believe that we need to take any pauses for the sake of a project manager at this point. I think we've laid out a path in which we need to go to, and I think I just wanna articulate that, 'cause I, I feel as though we may continue to get public comments saying, "We need to delay, delay, delay." I feel pretty clear with the path that we've been given in, in this RFP process, so, that we're going through tonight. So, I'm, I agree that we need to keep pressing forward. I, I did have, Rob, I, when I met with you today, I just had one comment on, pardon me, I'll get to it. Had it written down. On item six, and the way it's written is, "Increase landscape buffer for property to the south. Contact the neighboring property owner and address concerns to the extent possible," which covers that. So, not to get over-descriptive, but I, I just wanted to, for council consideration, to add, "With the option of full landscape buffer around the entire facility." And the option just means, let us know what that looks like so we have full screening of the facility and we can decide whether or not that's, you know, cost-effective or beneficial for siding and view." And that's my comments to be added into that, that language. That's the only thing I had, if, if anybody has any questions on that, or, no, okay. That's all I have. I'll move it on to John.
Thank you. Rob, again, thank you for turning this around very quickly. I know it was a monumental task, given all the things you had to do, so I do appreciate it, and whoever, again, in your staff helped do that. With regard to criteria number two, which was the one, one of the ones that I had recommended, I'm very comfortable with what I saw. And so, I'm happy to see that you've incorporated that and feel that that kind of matrix simplified with just three components is just fine, rather than complicating it with something like five or 10 different parameters. So, I'm, I'm good there. The, the issue with mitigation issues, number six I'm referring to with the neighbor also is one that I brought up. As I mentioned, I had an extensive conversation a couple of months ago with Mr. Minow, and, and I realize that you're going to get together as soon as possible and address other issues that may be important to him besides just the buffer, and there are other issues. And so, with that, I will just leave it at that as a comment, that it would be important. And I don't think there's anything you need to do with regard to the RFP and changing that at this time to address it, but I just wanted to lay that out. Thirdly, I, I guess, the discomfort I have is with item number, where is it? The floor plan, number seven. I think the comments, as I recall, that council made was really a concern about the sizing of that building as opposed to not just removing it from the floor plan. And I guess I'd wanna be assured, if you can find it, that that language has been modified to not be as encompassing as it was previously. And so, I'll be waiting to hear that response maybe from you when we get a chance to do that. I too agree that it's time to move this forward. Again, I've said it a number of times, that, you know, doing a simple back-of-the-envelope calculation on debt service costs, whether you have a $30,000 project versus a $70,000 project, debt service makes all the difference in the world as opposed to the actual cost of the entity. That doesn't mean that the cost of the project is not important, but to sacrifice potentially, the funding sources that are out there for us right now, at the rate that we have the possibility to get versus what market rates are and where they are going, will severely compromise this community, in my opinion, and, and the cost overall to the community for doing this project. So, I know I'm a broken record with regard to that, but I'm waiting for, for a couple of months for a project manager, I think stalls the project. I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of moving forward. I asked the question last time about alternatives in terms of funding that might be available if we don't get WIFIA and/or SRF funding. And what I heard was, there's not much out there that we can be assured of, and not that anything is, is sure. But the most sure bet that we have right now is WIFIA and SRF funding. That is about half the rate in terms of debt service that other funding sources would bring. And I believe we have to continue to move expeditiously to meet that. Although, I would like to see the EIR completed. I'd like to see the project manager onboard during this process. I just don't think we can wait. No, I know we can't wait because I believe it'll cost the community much more than that. So, I'm in favor of moving forward as well for those reasons, after hearing your response on that item. Thank you.
Marlis?
Yeah, thank you. And, and I concur with Mr. Hedding's comments, and this was the same issue that I raised earlier. I'd like to know specifically how much you reduced the size of the administration operations building when you removed the floor plan, because that's the requirement. So, I'm waiting to hear the answer to that as well. The other comment I had, I would like to add one paragraph to the project goals and discussion of the history of the introduction. And it's basically suggesting that we conducted the peer review process and they found $17 million of cost savings in the facilities master plan. And the reason I'd like that added is because they got, they have the facilities master plan, and I'd like them-
Can you read that again? Just read it verbatim so we can write it down and have it what you were saying?
Just, it's a paragraph that would suggest that we conducted, and whatever, on the date, a peer review panel composed of whoever the individuals were, and that they identified approximately $17 million in cost savings from the facilities master plan. And if you can detail what those are, that would be helpful, I would think. Yeah, and then I also just wanted to make sure that we looked very carefully at the evaluation criteria, because it is different than what we suggested or talked about in our last meeting. And I would just point out two things that have changed. One, the schedule and cost controls was previously in the price proposal. So, because it is cost control measures, and so, it seemed to me odd to move it from that. I don't know the rationale for that. I, I think we agreed that it should be 60% for whatever the cost is, so by moving it, I don't know how you would do that. And you eliminated the subcontractor, which I think should be a part at least of the management approach, and my own feeling is that it should be more than three points on this scale. So, I just would like us to look- So I just would like us to look at that carefully before we move forward. If that can be issued as an addendum, we don't need to do it tonight.
So for the sake of getting the RFP out and repeatedly over, you know, analyzing each part of this, I guess I would just ask that, one, if we're going to be doing this, we help Rob and provide these things with him ahead of time so it's helpful for him as a courtesy. So I just want to understand that the first, the first part of this, that you scripted out, that we can understand that and the second part is-
Well, I just, I also want to point out that we didn't, I got this at 3:00 this afternoon.
I understand.
So it's not like I had time to read it and study it.
Yeah.
Or I would have gotten it to Rob ahead of time.
So I just want to make sure that we've got what, so we're solidifying what comments we have, if we can do that. I just want to make sure so we can have the comments down that we wanted. So I got the conducted peer review panel identified $17 million in savings and the peer review was done on such and such a date as Marlis was saying. And then, and then there were certain items that were to be listed. That's very general, so maybe you can help us with that.
What I have is, add a paragraph to say, we conducted a, on X date, which I can't remember what that date was, a peer review process comprised of a number of members. And the peer review panel identified approximately $17 million in cost savings. These cost savings measures were comprised of compacting site plan, moving it down, looking at odor control, reducing fire pump requirements and the like. We have a listing of that in the peer review report that we can pull into there.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, cool. And then the next one, Marlis?
I just am looking at the evaluation criteria.
We both wanted to hear maybe the description of the admin.
Right.
So the admin building, I think we need a little bit more work because it, there's a couple of places where we're still referring to that floor plan. So we'll need to clean that up and not refer to the floor plan. We still give sample of, I know this was an issue before of specking out countertops and finishings, but that's to give an example of quality that we're looking for because they, like in the lab, they need to be chemical resistant, resilient types of maintainable, long-lasting materials, but we have the or equal provisions. And Mike's going to help me answer this question, it appears.
I was going to, Mike Numley with MKN, I was going to jump in and add a suggestion that I think might help with your, with your direction. So there's an appendix E to the performance criteria report and it's called the architectural space needs outline. I think if the, if we take out, if we no longer have the floor plan, and I think if we take the sizes of the facilities and things like numbers of lockers and that sort of thing off, and we just have a list that basically says operations, you know, operations building, you know, the administration area should include three, will include three offices, just a list of three offices. Operations, part of the facility include control room, map room, sample storage, just identify what areas, what rooms we need, maybe how many rooms, but we don't get into how many lockers, we don't have any, no square footages. Does that, would that help?
I think, I think that's what we discussed was, what are the requirements for the employees? How many are employees there? Are there offices or are they office spaces? And, you know, a lot of modern facilities, it's just office space and it's just one grand room. So I just, you know, just meet the criteria for the personnel, you know, all the functions that are needed, showers, et cetera, but let that be created and not necessarily be encumbered by a square footage. And, you know, I think the other goals in there would steer them to the direction of, let's design an efficient operations building based on the goals that we're asking for. That's, that's what I got out.
Yes. And just to remind us that, that Rob summarized last time, that basically staff owes us an evaluation of the rationale for wanting possibly, I hate to say larger, but more components in the admin building versus what we may want based upon your analysis of costs of the current site and what it may take to capital improve that site versus moving it. And that comes at a later date, I'm assuming, and could be added later, but that's not going to happen before you send this RFP.
It will happen and if we need to make changes, that would happen through the addendum process. So what we're evaluating is, what we understand is that there will be no general fund functions at the WRF site, but there will be operational facilities for all the folks it'll take to operate the water and wastewater system. So water crew and wastewater crew because they, they don't just do one job. They have to be versed in all the jobs out there. So operational space for all day and they all work together. As an alternative to that, we're having this space needs study is if we split that crew and only kept the minimum operational staff that would take to operate the treatment plant, what would it take at our existing courtyard facilities to bring those up to code and to maintain that workforce there? That's what we will be presenting to counsel. I agree with Mr. Numley in modifying the appendix E, removing square footages, talking about, you know, office space for three supervisors. Typically managers and supervisors will need a private office to discuss employee relations with their charges. And then a kind of a bullpen area for the main operations staff, a work area that has several workstations in it.
And how many staff are we talking about?
So we're talking about the full water and wastewater staff. So currently 16 employees. Perhaps will we be reducing that as we move forward?
Okay, I would support moving forward with the suggestions based on our discussion. I feel comfortable with that personally. I don't feel that we need to have a verbatim crafted message at this point. And based on your feedback on the, what was just read on conducted a peer review, that seems reasonable to me. That's where I'm at. I just want to make sure the rest of everybody else is comfortable with that.
And we'll highlight that, changes to the document on our website too. So, and then send that link to counsel so you can review, see that we actually did what we're saying that we're going to do tonight.
So are we all comfortable with the evaluation criteria as proposed?
I am, I, yeah, yeah.
What we heard was, while it's not the only thing, cost is the most important thing in the evaluation of this project.
Would you be willing to add to management approach, including subcontractor, I can't remember what your word was, but that was dropped from the list and it seemed pretty important to me.
See if I can get what that was before.
Oh, well, we're right at the time, Red. Sorry about that. I didn't think we were going to be here. So I'd make a motion that we go continue beyond 11 o'clock and we do have one more item on the agenda. So I need, so that's the motion. I need a second.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. I'll just say, all in favor, say aye.
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 We have three ayes. All those opposed?
No.
So we have two noes. So Marlis, John, myself in favor, Matt, Red, not in favor. Motion carries, we'll move on. Thanks, we're right at 11 o'clock, thanks.
Are we adding this, what are we adding to the?
We're adding the subcontractor. Excuse me, mic was off. We're adding as a criteria, the subcontractor review of their cost controls and making sure that they're the correct subcontractor. So we can add that back in as a criteria. I would suggest we not reduce the cost, but we take it from other items. To be frank, I think cost will be the deciding factor on this. We can split the hairs on the other items, but really it's going to be more like a low bid project.
Okay. Matt?
Sorry, thanks.
Rob, I do have a more general question that kind of goes back to the beginning of this discussion for this item as I was talking about. When we talk about bringing on the project manager, knowing that we have the EIR running conjunctively as we go through this, do we, do we threaten the timeline of the project by bringing on a project manager?
No, I don't believe so. They'll step in and take on some of, excuse me, some of the components that I do and we'll see a reduction in MKN's kind of overall program management role in their scope of work. So that function is being done right now. The program manager, the goal is to keep on track with this project and to keep the technical team in place until, well, until we're done with the project or the time is appropriate to change technical teams, but to not lose a step in bringing on the program manager.
Okay, that makes sense. But, and then also the follow-up to that, how much does not having, or as the EIR is in process, does that affect the RFPs that these folks are going to be putting together?
Like I've said before, ideally, we would have done this process sequentially-
Well, I totally understand that, but without having that information of the EIR, are we going to impact them significantly?
We would not have a allowance for unknown mitigation measures in the RFP if we would had completed the EIR first. We have that placeholder, it's not a slush fund. It is, the contractor has to come to us and explain why they need to use that money. It's not up to the contractor to decide how that's used, it's up to the city to decide whether we're going to release funds for that.
And it will only be used for mitigation measures.
Yes.
It's a risk reduction strategy, is that correct?
What's that?
It's a risk reduction strategy.
It's a risk reduction strategy to keep the bid costs lower so that we can take care of some of the unknowns. It's not for the contractor needs to do some, has a change order. That's a separate process, a negotiated change order process.
Ready to make a motion? Anybody?
Okay. Want to do it?
Go ahead.
You want it? Go ahead.
Okay, well, I move that we authorize release of a RFP for design build of the City of Morro Bay Water Reclamation Facility Onsite Improvements to three pre-qualified design build entities that submitted statements of qualifications in accordance with the request for qualifications issued on October 27, 2017. And amend the RFP to include those amendments that counsel stated previously. Do I need to outline those or, nope, good. Do I need to outline those? Okay.
No, I haven't.
Second. Motion by Mr. Heding, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? None? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, none, motion carries, 5-0. Great, thanks. And then moving on to our next item, item C3. This is accept voluntary resignations of Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee, WRFCAC members considering a request for leave of absence and provide direction regarding the number of committee members and purpose for that committee. And looking for-
Rob?
Rob, we don't need it.
No, you don't need that.
Given the time, we're going to attempt to move through this rather quickly.
Thanks, Dana.
Staff is seeking council direction on a few items related to the Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee. Council and staff has recently received letters of resignation from three committee members. And we ask that you discuss and provide direction on the desired number of members moving forward so that we can begin recruitment to fill the appropriate number of vacancies. We also ask that you consider the request by John Di Addati to consider a four to six month leave of absence for professional reasons. As an alternative, the council may wish to consider establishing a mission statement and other policies to guide the work of this committee. And provide other direction as deemed appropriate by the council.
All right, Dana, thank you. And with that, any questions at this point or just want to go into public comment? Questions? No questions? All right. Public comment, Tina Metzger and then Barbara Spagnola. Only, Tom? Okay.
Tina Metzger, resident of Morro Bay. I still didn't get an answer to my question during the last item concerning the layout. Why is that? Why wasn't I answered to that question? I still would like an answer. To avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest, Mr. Di Addati should resign as a member of WRFCAC. He works at the county, he represents the county, and there is an appearance of a conflict of interest, so he should resign as a member of WRFCAC. And I also believe that we should keep the Citizens Advisory Committee and not get rid of it. There's a lot of complex work coming up concerning the draft EIR. And the council will need help on this and there are a lot of capable people on the Citizens Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thanks, Tina. Barbara Spagnola. Tom, I don't have a speaker slip for you. Or do you want to speak? I don't have a speaker slip for you. Never mind.
Good evening.
Thanks, Barbara.
Sure. Barbara Spagnola, resident of Morro Bay. As you know, I am the chair of the Citizens Finance Committee and the vice chair of the WRFCAC, Water Reclamation Facility, but for the sake of clarity, I'm speaking as an individual, not on behalf of those two committees, although my comments are predicated on my experience on both of the committees. So I just want to share my thoughts on the WRFCAC, the composition and the future direction possibly. And basically, right now, WRFCAC is at nine members with three vacancies. I believe that number may be a little bit large in terms of trying to fill three or possibly four vacancies soon. We've only had one vacancy on this committee that I've been on prior to now and that was last summer, I believe. We only had one applicant and then that person is now one of the resignations due to the workload. So my concern is, I believe it would be very difficult to get qualified, interested, motivated citizens to make up the slack three or four, just for your consideration. Secondly, if you were to bump down to five on CFAC, that was not enough to get work accomplished with the use of subcommittees because of the majority. So ideally, if I had to choose a number, my perspective only, would be seven. The second point I wanted to make tonight is that I would like you to seriously consider the, at some point, maybe not now, but the alternative C. And the alternative C, as I understand it, is transferring the engineering aspect of our current WRFCAC to the Public Works Advisory, PWA, board. That seems like a logical place for it. And simultaneously transferring- And simultaneously transferring the financial aspect of the WRF to the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. And the reason I'm suggesting that is because it might be a little, from a logical standpoint, a little better place to do it, and it might be easier to staff up. We have some finance experts on our committee now. PWEB has some good experts as well in the technical phases. And the other thing is, I will say, for clarity, I have changed my position on the CFAC, absorbing that workload from what I discussed with at least one of you over a year ago, and I've discussed this with citizens and staff. My position previously was CFAC was not staffed to take on that big a workload when we couldn't accomplish our current work plan. We were ramping up from five to seven members, had a lot of new members. Most of us had no municipal finance experience, so I felt we couldn't take that on until we could get people up to speed. However, I believe now, we could probably on CFAC power up a subcommittee, so I think you may be better served at some point in the future, considering that. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Anybody else for public comment?
Tom Ross, of Morro Bay, again. I urge you to keep your work cap. All the times I've been before you and telling you that you've got a project that may very well not find its fruition, you don't have a Plan B. I suggest that you get people from Cal that are qualified, like Barry Bannon, Bart Beckman, on your work cap, so that you have a group that can formulate a Plan B for you. Let's assume that the 218 vote fails, and you don't have the financing, then you're going to have to reconsider the project. And when you do that, if you get busy now and get your work cap with really qualified people on it to fill these vacancies, like project, past or retired project managers, and task them to find a Plan B for you in the event that the railroad has a wreck someplace, then you're saving face for yourself, but more importantly, for the citizens of Morro Bay.
Thanks, Tom. Anybody else for public comment?
I'm Mayor and City Council. Paul Donnelly, a member of the WRFCAC, as you know, but I'm speaking here on my own behalf tonight, not on behalf of the committee. If there's any consideration to disbanding the committee, there's still a lot of outstanding issues that we'd like to talk about. I'm on the environmental subcommittee, and we've been waiting patiently for the EIR, and we'd love to see that. I know there's some work going on in the pipeline and the lift station, but there's some pipeline routes that we have not seen any exhibits for. We'd really like to discuss those. There's also some issue about whether or not we can inject the water. The verbal project description that Rob gave us the other day said that hopefully we could do that, so we still don't know whether or not this water is actually going to be reused when it's all said and done. So, I just wanted to share with you a quote from the minutes of our very first WRFCAC meeting back in September 2014. Quote, it said, "John Rickinbock stated the essential role of the committees is to be a bridge between the City Council and the general public," end quote. To me, we are really the only public outreach you have right now with the public. You've not really gone out with any publications or any other things to bring the public, so the public comes to us. So, I'd like to see that we continue to be that bridge, if you let us. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. With that, I'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Marlis, you want to start off?
Yes. Okay. Well, I'd like to begin by just verifying, and I know this is the case, that the special committees do not have regular meeting dates, so they are not necessarily supposed to meet every month. Is that right?
That's correct.
Yep. And because it is a special committee, there also are no attendance requirements like there are for the other committees. Is that also...
There are no established bylaws for these committees.
Right. So, there is no mission statement and no expectations. And so, I, first of all, would like to say that I would really support that we do that. I definitely support keeping WRFCAC, and I also support reducing the number from nine to seven. And as I recall, the reason it turned out to be nine was initially, we had so many applicants that we kind of, I think we had like 16, and we cut it down, but it's the only committee of that size. All of the others are seven or less, and most are five. So, and I know it's difficult to get a quorum when you have that large a group. Five is a quorum, and now you only have a quorum. Everybody has to attend. So, I would support moving, changing it, and I'm glad that Barbara Spagnola also agreed with that. I think it's regrettable that we have to accept so many resignations at the same time, but I can understand they're for personal reasons. On the issue of the chairperson, John Di Addati's request for a leave of absence, I would not support that, and I want to say that it's not because I don't think he's done a good job, or think he's been a good chair. I just think that we can't, it's a crucial point in this project, and I don't think we can afford to have one person missing for the next four to six months. So, as much as I regret saying that, which I really do because I appreciate his service, I think we would be better to accept his resignation and try to get a full complement moving forward. So, that's my discussion.
Thanks, Marlis. John?
Thank you. I agree with everything Marlis said, including Mr. Di Addati and recognizing him for his service. I do agree that a six-month or four to six-month absence would be excessive, given the time right now, and I understand the increased responsibilities that he does have at his own workplace, which are significant in the county. So, I would be in favor of a seven-member committee. I would also be in favor of moving the financial review to CFAC. I wasn't in favor of that before, but the Chair has come forward and told me that they're ready to go, to do that, and I appreciate that, and I think that would take a big piece of some of the work that was subcommittee work that CFAC really didn't have adequate resources, or WRFCAC, I should say, didn't have adequate resources to perform. So, I do support moving finance, the financial review, to the CFAC. And also, I believe on the committee, there was a representative from the Planning Commission, as well as somebody from PWEB, and I would support those two positions remaining as part of the seven. And so, I would keep a planning commissioner appointed by the Planning Commission, as well as a PWEB representative. It may well be that engineering interface that would be part of the committee as well. I crafted a mission statement. I forgot it, but I'd be happy to submit it to Mr. Collins and Mr. Livick, because I thought I'd save them some time, but unfortunately, I forgot it. I'm sorry.
Okay. It gives, yeah, okay. Matt?
I concur with so much of what Marlis and John said. Establishing a mission statement, great. I do want to keep WRFCAC. I'm totally fine with going from nine to seven members, and John, that was a great point about keeping planning and PWEB. I think in terms of the cohesion of our community groups, that's very important. I, however, I want to accept Di Addati's leave of absence request. I think his experience on the board has been instrumental, and I think all the board, by trying to keep it instead of spreading it around, I think we are acknowledging, after listening not just to ourselves, but to public comment, this is an important board, and what this board, they've sacrificed so much, they collectively, for going on four years, that this is important. And going forward, I understand that it is a critical time in the job, in the project. However, I think that experience is very important. So, I would not, I want to accept his leave of absence. And then Barbara's suggestion about the CFAC review, perhaps that could be a great relief to WRFCAC in terms of workload and what it brings to them, and be able to farm it out. Barbara, as she going back and forth between WRFCAC and CFAC, that would be a wonderful conduit to be bringing back, back and forth that information. So, that's all.
Okay, thanks. Red?
I agree that it's a good move to reduce the size of the committee to seven, and to move the financial review duties to CFAC. I would be in favor of accepting Mr. Di Addati's resignation. The position that he's currently filling is an interim position, and he may very well be appointed to that position in the future, and he may never return. I crafted a mission statement, which I'd be happy to read, to advise and make recommendations to council on matters relating to development of a WRF as described in Resolution 34-14. Such advice is to be consistent with and intended to meet the community goals adopted by council. And if that turns out to be acceptable, I can just give this to Dana.
So, are you done?
I'm done, yes.
Okay, all right, good. So, I would support the maintain WRFCAC and the membership to seven. The financial portion to CFAC. First of all, Barbara and Paul, both, thanks for attending the meeting, your service, and I appreciated your introduction, acknowledging, you know, who you are on our advisory boards and in what capacity you're speaking. It was a great example of an advisory board member and what, you know, the importance of, and we value, you know, both your position as an advisory board member, but your personal comments and the content. So, I just want to do that. And before I get too far on that, I'd like to thank John Di Addati for his service as well, as well as Jenny Gerlach and Ann Fullerton and Dale Guerra. You know, all those, all those folks that came out and interviewed and went through that have made a commitment and a sacrifice, and for, you know, for their own reasons, have made a choice to step down from that position. So, I just want to say personally, thank you to all of you, those members that have served, and I think it's, it's been a sacrifice to do all that as well, and it still is for those members that are active. So, reluctantly, I would accept John's letter as a resignation. Matt, I agree. I think he's been very valuable. I don't see any conflict of interest whatsoever. I think we've got some pretty diverse, both personalities and expertise, and I think there's fairly good complement, and I think he's done a great job. John has done a great job as Chair, so reluctantly, I would accept the letter as a resignation, given the fact that four to six months is such a large gap, and I think we're really at the next new phase where we need to be, we need some pretty strong continuity. So, anyway, those are my feelings. So, I would support the seven. As far as the finance committee, I appreciate that. I'm a little hesitant, you know, and we just had a great report tonight and for great I think if we're to do that, for one, I think we need to revisit the mission statement and goals for CFAC, no different than we just stated tonight. We need to be clear about the directions that we're going forward on. And I, you know, I say that, the resolution for the WRFCAC, aside from Red's great mission statement that you read, and particularly the quote from John Rickinbock bridging, you know, between the City Council and public, I think there needs to be some refined focus in that mission statement, I think is one of them. So, if we go down that road with CFAC, I think we need to consider what the roles and responsibilities are of CFAC as well, and make sure we're clear with that. So...
Could I add one more thing, too, when you're done?
Sure, yeah. So, basically, it seems as though, moving forward, we would be looking at making a recommendation to accept the resignations of the members listed. That would be Jenny, Ann, Dale. And also, it seems as though we have a majority to support reluctantly denying a leave of absence from Mr. Di Addati, but saying thank you for his service and considering that as a resignation. And then, then we would be beginning the recruitment to fill vacancies to the number of seven. And there's the, I'm reading the recommendations as we have here, and so we've got a mission statement that we can, I think, have closure on, and I think that's where we're at. And Marlis, you have some comments?
I just wanted to say that I also support waiting on transferring immediately the responsibilities to CFAC. I think we should wait and see what kind of applicants we get for the WRFCAC, and if we get strong financial expertise on that committee, we may want to reconsider that, or at least think more carefully about how to apportion the responsibilities between those two groups. So, I think it's premature to make that decision. And I also wanted to say that I hope we also, and we could do this in the revision of the handbook for advisory bodies, craft some kind of attendance policy for the special committees, at least for this one, because we really do need to make sure that the members are serious and want to participate and attend.
And to update everybody, I mean, that is what we will be bringing back. I mean, as a subcommittee to the policies and procedures, those are the things that, you know, we had some instruction and conversation on bringing back, you know, the final review. That will be, of course, with council. So, there's, there's some adds to that. So, I would agree with waiting with that recommendation as well. Marlis, on the CFAC portion of the recommendation?
Just one more comment? I would disagree with that, and maybe offer up a middle-of-the-road consideration. I attend CFAC routinely. As I mentioned earlier, the very foundation of that committee has transitioned, not only in structure, but expertise with municipal finance, and now with a new finance director. There's a good working relationship and great capacity there. I would hate to see duplication of those issues, and so maybe we could ask the Chair, who just came, Ms. Spagnola, up and made a statement regarding their ability possibly to do that, not necessarily to come now, but to come with a revised work plan, from asking the committee to consider the possibility, and if they agree, that they could absorb the resources, make that recommendation, have that come back as the possibility of an added change to WRFCAC. So, I would support what you've said, but with that consideration for hearing. Whoops, what they have to say as a committee.
So, we're, I think we're supporting each other in many different ways. Do you have some comments, Scott?
Yeah, we owe the WRFCAC committee a update on the war finances from the last quarters, and that would be a good opportunity, maybe as a breaking point at that point forward, everything else financially related to go to CFAC. We have a CFAC meeting in February as well. We can bring this forward and get their, get the feel from that committee if they're willing to enable to take it on.
Yeah, and I'll say this to our colleagues, for staff's benefit, that we owe staff the responsibility that, and the self-check as we move forward on moving to CFAC to... responsibility that, and the self-check as we move forward on moving to CFAC, to take on this responsibility, to get that feedback from staff on whether or not this is going to be productive, if we're asking too much from staff. And, you know, I know we have those conversations, but I think we need to do that self-check on whether or not we're setting ourselves up for a new agenda item and asking ourselves to do something new, and what are we going to drop off to do that? So, I just want to reiterate that we need to have that kind of self-check moment when we start doing these things.
Absolutely agree, and the workload should be, in my mind, exactly the same, just transferring the functionality to a different body. So, that's what I'm hoping.
I would definitely ask Ms. Callaway to weigh in if she feels appropriate.
Okay.
Anytime.
So, Rob, if I'm wrong on the date, let me know, but the next WRFCAC meeting is February 6th. I believe it's the 6th.
It's the first Tuesday in February.
Which is the 6th. So, and I think in the last staff report from the last council meeting, I indicated that we would do the first quarter and mid-year report at that meeting. So, I think we should, you know, stick with that obligation. The next CFAC meeting is February 20th. So, as a follow-up from the 6th meeting, we can, we plan to do a full comprehensive mid-year review with CFAC. We'll incorporate the WRF report as well, and then have the discussion there about transferring it over to the committee. So, I think it will all flow fine, and we can report back at mid-year on the 27th with the results.
Okay?
Thank you. I'm good with that.
All right, so, okay. So, I was reading through the motions, but we just want to reiterate that?
Yeah, give me your notes. I would move that we continue with the WRFCAC committee to include seven members, and that the, thank you.
Accept the resignations?
Accept the resignations from the individuals that submitted full resignations, and also, unfortunately, deny the request by Mr. Di Addati for an absence and accept his resignation as chair, and thank all of the individuals for their participation in the committee, and that we would include at least one member of the committee representing the planning commission to be appointed by planning commission, and one member to be appointed by the PWEB committee, and the remainder to be vetted by the city council, I would imagine.
And a mission statement.
And I would accept the mission statement as eloquently stated by my colleague, Mr. Davis, as the mission statement of the WRFCAC from here on.
Thanks, Red. Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, and it's a motion by Mr. Heding, second by Marlis. Any further discussion? So, just to reiterate, we're accepting the resignations from the members listed, Jenny, Ann, and Dale. We're going to begin the recruitment to fill those vacancies. We're going to deny the request for leave of absence from John Di Addati and accept that as a resignation. We are establishing a mission statement as stated by Red Davis. I'm repeating the motion, and...
A member from planning and a member from...
A member from planning and a member from PWEB, which is currently what we have. Okay. And five appointed by the city council. And that was the motion. We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. And then, anything else for this item? Any further direction? Okay. Council declaration of future agenda items?
Just maybe one question for our city clerk. The volunteer adopt-a-park guidelines, what, to come back? Do we have that on? I missed it on the agenda planning guide, I'm sorry.
Yes, Janine Berlin Game has been out for several weeks, but I spoke with her yesterday, and she believes it'll be ready to come back in March, either the first or second meeting of March. It has been to the PWEB, she just has some cleanup work to do to have it ready for council.
Great. And for me, if we're doing agenda items, I have one to request support for. As I've mentioned a number of times, I represent the city of Morro Bay on the Air Pollution Control Board, and I would like to agendize a discussion of the North County health issues and ask for a discussion by the council on the issue and possibly consider a letter outlining our concerns. And I will bring that information.
Yep.
Did I say North County, South County? I'm sorry. Yeah, South County, yeah.
So, do we have, that's support from Red, Matt, myself, Marlis? Okay, we've got unanimous support on that? And anything else? Thanks for that, John. So, how is that going to, how is that going to come back to us?
I'd be happy to write the staff report if you would like, or however, if that would help.
Coordinate?
Submit that to the, to you and to...
With Scott? Okay.
Want to make sure that's okay with the legal counsel?
All right.
Thanks.
All right, thanks. If there's no other future agenda items, our next regular council meeting is Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, right here at the Vets Hall, and this meeting's adjourned. Oh, wait, sorry.
And just to remind the community about the retreat on February 2nd?
Okay, February 2nd, council retreat, the council goal retreat.
Right, 12 to 6 at the Community Center East Auditorium, or Auditorium East. We'll have it properly signed so people can find their way.
Okay, great. Thanks, Scott. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks.